At this time, I'll accept the motion to go into close session pursuant to Minnesota Statute thirteen D point zero five subdivision three B for the purpose of discussing attorney client privileged information.
I'll make the motion to go into close session.
I'll second.
All bearers say aye.
Aye.
It's called.
Thank you.
This time, I will accept the motion to end the closed session and return to the open meeting. The motion to move with your second. All favorites say aye.
Aye.
So I'll move on. Okay, we'll call the work meeting and session and look at the agenda. And one of the things that because of the attendance, people running a little late. I'd like to move number six to five and five to six. That would be with folks. All right. Are there any new employees? Oh. Anything with future work meeting topics?
Uh, Mr. Chair. I believe I received an email from Dr. Eggers maybe over the weekend. Um, asking if the board would be um willing to uh receive an update from him in regards to the one hundred percent graduation rate at some uh future uh work meeting. And I know in the past that he has uh came to the board to kind of fill us in. If we can do that, I appreciate it.
Anything else?
Anyone else? All right. We will move on to opioid settlement funding.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Uh, I'm Amy Bowles. I'm your public health director. And I'm here today to just provide you with an update on um the current members of our opiate steering committee. And um some allocations of the funding um that we'd like to look at uh for the first remainder of the years moving forward. And the funds that we've already received. So as you can see in your packet. We are presenting that the current opiate steering committee members have voted to allocate the following opiate settlement funds on an annual basis. These percentages are based on the actual funds received, not on the funds that we're anticipating. We'd like to set aside per the MOA, ten percent of the funding received each year would go to administrative um services as the uh the MOA states, the county has the um opportunity to do that. And then we would like to set aside fifteen percent each year of the actual amount received for correctional and specifically uh for the reset program. Um, and if you're not familiar with the reset program, it has been a very, very beneficial um program um in our correctional facility. Um, that's primarily overseen um by Amanda Sackell. And then we would like to set aside fifteen percent for youth services. Um, looking at education and training throughout our coun- county and so um that might be something as training um the staff and employees at schools or at Evergreens or um at another um facility that's impacted or works with youth impact uh impacted by opiates. Um, an example that we could give that was super successful was last week, we provided um three hour um train hour trainings for Black Duck, for Trek North and for School Craft, and we included um their required training that's re- uh required for the schools in addition to um Joe Klezak uh did uh drug um training for them, including opiates, and we taught them how to use Narcan, how to use an AED. We did um first art aid training and that um um that fifteen percent could go to support um additional training um like that. And so what we are presenting today um is just for conversation and consideration as this is a work session. Um, I would be willing to bring this back to the board on nine eighteen uh during the regular work session for a for formal board vote unless the board would choose to move it to a vote today during today's regular work session.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So curious. And maybe I ju- I I missed something, but that's forty percent. And wh- where's the other one? What am I missing?
Sixteen.
Where's the other sixteen percent?
Yeah.
That was my question too.
As you may recall, it's a great question. We're we are forming a steering committee, which we will hopefully um have solidified and bring back to you for your approval on September eighteenth meeting also. Um, and that steering committee, which will be composed of community members and other individuals um from organizations throughout our county. Um, that sixty percent would then be voted on decide about uh decided on by that co- uh committee. And so what we're looking to do is allocate forty percent off the top um to help support um uh county funded um activities and then leave the other sixty percent for the committee and with your blessing um oversight um for spending down the road as we go. Does that make sense or does that create another question?
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
My, I guess part of my concern with that would be will the steering committee and community members that are appointed to the steering committee feel like they were shorted because they weren't involved in that initial decision? Um, you know, just wondering if it's if it would be better to wait until the steering committee is approved and then have the entire steering committee review the 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 whole works instead of doing it upfront? I mean, the ten percent, I think, is pretty obvious that should go without saying probably, but the the but the other things and I think, you know, is the reset and the youth, I think, are great, but you know, would those get revisited if we do it now? Versus if we wait until the steering committee is there, maybe they would go up and maybe do twenty-five percent apiece on those instead. I don't know, but that's that's my thoughts on it.
Sure, that's actually a great question. So with the um reset program, that's kind of already a set that fifteen percent would just go to reset to help support that program, but the fifteen percent for youth, because we're not designating it for a specific program. We would have the opportunity for the steering committee to um be able to evaluate that at fifteen percent. We just want to kind of earmark it, if you would, for um making sure that we are looking at the areas where we see the highest need. Um, because we are already starting to do some work in those areas, for example, like the three um sessions that we've provided um last week for the schools.
Are you saying that we wouldn't be able to do more than fifteen percent for the reset program?
Um, we could definitely do more if should the um commissioners choose to um allocate more than that. We are just wanting to set a minimum of the sides. So the steering committee, when we have the rest of the members, know that we've already set aside some of that money with your blessing um to help support those um programs.
That'd be my concern would be that they think that some of them that might erroneously think that that's already been settled and that's all we want to do for those program. And I wouldn't wanna pigeonhole them into thinking that it's already been done. Obviously, you could tell them that, but.
Yeah, exactly.
Oh, Mr. Mr. Chair. I I think the committee is made up of sixteen members, correct?
Uh, currently, we have nine.
Nine.
And then we are looking at adding another six.
So so then those nine are are uh connected to the colony that was uh either through uh, I believe they're all employees of the county, correct? So the other six are, you know, community members, and I think um uh the county employees would would uh be looking out, you know, for what's in the best interest of the county. So I I don't know if the additional six uh committee members would feel slighted in in any way. That's my thoughts, you know, and being part of this uh committee, you know, I see the the work that has went into it and uh and some of the hopes and and goals that this committee has uh for this. So I I have no issues or concerns, but I mean, I that's because I'm part of the committee, you know.
Well, that's important, though. That's important. Okay, John? Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Amy, um, I I'm I'm kind of thinking along the lines that Craig's thinking is that the reset program has been so good and I I think we would need a statistic maybe of all the people that Amanda's helped and have not re-entered or gone back to jail, how many of those were actually because they were addicted to opioids? And I and if it's a larger, if it's as large a number as I think it is, then I would be certainly in favor of doing more for the reset program as opposed to anything less. But but it would be nice to know um if Amanda, maybe can Amanda pull those that information for us?
Yep, I can definitely get that um.
Because then then it's obviously a great use of opioid money. I, in my opinion.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Joe? So this is a two point eight million dollars, correct, uh, over the next fifteen years roughly?
Estimated, yeah.
Okay. I cringe a little bit at the ten percent administrative uh fee because working in the legislature. You know, it's pretty standard to have either five percent or ten percent or somewhere in between as kind of a standard for um administrative um processing. Um, I would feel a little more comfortable if it was at five percent, uh, somewhere between five and ten percent, and that way we could do a little more for both the reset program and the youth at this point. Um, and maybe um additional dollars for whatever proposal comes next from the from the group. So um I just wanted to put that out there. And then I did have a question. In in your opinion, do you think that uh we risk having the youth services and reset program fifteen percent each? Do we risk that going down if we kick it back to the committee and then come back for a a a more fuller picture of recommendations? Because I kind of like on the one hand, I'd kind of like to see it in the entirety, um, not just forty percent of it right now. I I kind of would like to see recommendations uh from the entire committee, hundred percent of the funds. But maybe not at the risk of less money for reset and and youth services as proposed right now. So like, do you foresee that going down at all if we if we wait on this?
Ultimately.
The board.
It's up to us.
No.
So we wouldn't have, we wouldn't have to approve it if they'd left.
Right, okay, no.
And as a board, we could say at least fifteen percent or at least, yeah, twenty percent, whatever we want to do, but I think I think the question before was once we know a little bit more information, we would we would be better able to evaluate that. But I I I guess I'm also involved with BASK, another group that is supportive of our youth in in the area. And we've last few years, we've uh the person in charge does so much and spends so much of her her time that ten percent uh administrative fee, I think, would I would, I would like to see it stay there because it's hard to move it up once you've established it. So um we can go either way. Is it going to be a problem if we don't uh, okay, this uh this part at this point until you get your committee members, is there are there costs that are built that we that need to be um paid by this fund? Uh, because we, you know, we don't have, we don't have another funding source?
Um, we potentially could look at using our local public health grant to cover the expenses of what we did last week um and the work that Monica and I have been doing under the opiate. Um, so like our administration costs for putting the meetings together and organizing all those things that we're doing for the the steering committee, working with um the community advertising and stuff like that. Um, preparing for the community li- listening such session. Um, at your advice, we could definitely um allocate those dollars to local public health. Um, but the work that we are doing is specifically related to opiate, and that's why um we were moving in that direction. You guys do, um, you're are correct, Commissioner Anderson, you are correct that uh you could say today, um, we would like to do twenty percent towards the reset and twenty percent towards youth and, you know, ten percent towards administration and then let the steering committee as it develops and and looks at evidence-based research, looks at already established programs in our community where those dollars might be allocated towards. And just because we say that um we think this is where we're going to use those dollars, we may come back to you and say, you know what? Um, we really wanted to use fifteen percent of this for for youth, but we're seeing a a greater need in providing this um uh curriculum for all of our county schools, and we want to be able to provide that, but it's going to take more than fifteen percent, right? And so we may come to you and say, we need this X amount of dollars to do that program. So in addition to the fifteen percent, we'd like to be able to spend that. So the the takeaway for me is you guys have the authority to create that percentage. And you guys also have the authority to um uh, when we come to you to actually spend the money to say, no, we we want more information or um you know, that's you're only giving us one one lane to look down. We want you to give us a couple of different options to pick from. So um today, what we're just asking is we'd like kind of a placeholder uh for those dollars to ask answer your other question, Commissioner Anderson, you did mention, has any of that money been spent? Hypothetically, no, because you haven't given us your blessing. But um have we done the work already? Yes, we've done some of that work. Amanda's already, you know, working hard in the reset program. Um, just to give you kind of an idea, if you're numbers people and you want to put a dollar to that amount. So for the amount that we have um currently received uh for twenty twenty-two for Amanda's program for reset in twenty twenty-two, that would give us forty-nine thousand seven hundred and sixty-five dollars. And for the money that we've received in twenty twenty-three, that would give us fifty thousand one hundred and eighty-one dollars. And for youth, um, that would give us um the same amount because they're both fifteen percent. And then for the ten percent, it would be thirty-three thousand one hundred and seventy-seven dollars, and it would be uh thirty-three thousand four hundred and fifty-four dollars for what we've currently received. And I did bring copies of my spreadsheet, but I didn't know if you guys would be interested in seeing my math.
Well, I I guess the thing is, there's two things in my mind that's going on is one, it's good to get started with activities that make a difference. And for us to step back and say, no, we're And for us to step back and say, no, we're not going to give any indication whether we're happy with this or not by by voting it in. That means that somehow you have to find the funding source somewhere else. And and we could be missing an opportunity to move forward. So uh, I would like us as a board to give some type of uh, motion to accept moving forward because to get six people on board and up to par is going to take some time.
Mr. Chair, I would like to uh, see us address it on the on the board meeting tonight and just set these these as minimums. Although I think the ten percent is probably a a maximum that we're allowed to do for administrative. And we wouldn't need to do more than ten percent probably. So so I would, I would just say we do that, that we put it on the agenda for tonight. And then we that we would hopefully, you know, at that point in time, we can make a motion something to affect that these are the minimums. And then based on, once we have more information that we would then choose to, if we want to set it at a higher percentage at that point after we get more information, but that we would at least have something so the money could actually get paid for the administrative costs out of the actual funding right away. And then we could um, address the specifics at a later date. So if we moved it to tonight's agenda, we could put it on as whatever thirteen, fourteen or something.
Are we, Joe, are you?
In favor of that?
Okay. Tim?
Okay.
Don Safran on the agenda.
We would expect to have him, you're right.
Yeah, yeah.
Tom will have have it already set up, I'm sure.
Yeah. Don't worry, you can't get fired if I think.
All right. Uh, thank you.
Okay.
Very much.
Thanks.
Thanks, Amy. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, uh, and I see that uh, we have folks in place now for the audit. All right, and um, financial statements.
Right. Well, it is awesome being here today. I love it. Bell Trammy County so much. I'm coming back in two days, maybe going to the campground. Maybe catch a few blue gills, have fish fries. So um, that is, if you let me out of here after all the news I got to convey, right? But uh,
The twenty.
Thought you were probably already doing that. So the twenty-two audit's done and um, as in prior years, we put together a little PowerPoint to hit the main things or high points of uh, that came about as part of the audit in the PowerPoint on page two, just an agenda. There's some required things I got to communicate to the board. I'll summarize the results of our internal control testing and compliance testing and single audit testing, which is where we audit your compliance and controls for the federal grants. Look at the financial results and summarize it. So as far as introduction goes, um, this is my twentieth year of uh, working on your audit. It feels like yesterday when um, shoot, I was, well, I wasn't a principal at the time. I was just a manager. But um, I, like they say, time does fly when you're having fun because I'm still having fun doing this and love working with everyone here at the county. Um, as far as required communications, audit standards dictate the procedures we need to do and the communications that happen. And you as a board, um, there's some additional requirements for us, and we do that via a four-page letter, which is included in your little handout there. Um, I'm gonna just hit on the high points. You know, we issued an opinion on your financials. It's called an unmodified opinion, which means your statements are materially correct as presented. Um, just know that your financial statements do include estimates. They're in compliance with generally accepted accounting principles. But a lot of times people may think, oh, everything's got to be right to the penny. No, there's estimates like, well, how long's the vehicle gonna last? And how long do we depreciate it for? Um, we got awesome cooperation from management and staff as in prior years. I want to thank everybody here at the county. Um, it'd always be interesting for me, and I wanted to do it, maybe I'll do it be at some point, but like, if I had to estimate, I think we'd probably make requests, interview or bug, I don't know, maybe thirty, forty people uh, during an audit roughly, depending upon how many different like programs we test. But to a person, everyone here is always very responsive, kind, and I, we just really appreciate. So I just want to thank everybody. Um, we do our, we use a risk-based audit approach, and because there's a lot of capital asset activity, we did design some extra tests over that, but uh, no significant items to report there. And we did do a single audit, which means we're testing your compliance and controls with the federal grants. On page seven, um, there's just two items we're required to communicate. One was, we had a couple audit adjustments and a restatement um, in the landfill fund, just to tweak um, a a liability that had been reported there in the past. And then segregation duties, just we're, we need to remind you that not all departments have full segregation of the accounting functions. As far as the federal single audit goes, um, there were no material weaknesses. That's the highest level of communications, material weaknesses. So we have none of those, but there were some other ones that popped up. And they're categorized as significant efficiencies, and one was for the uh, so coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds, CSL F R F. Um, we do some, there's a compliance requirement for procurement or contracting, and for one of the five that we tested, we weren't presented with supporting documentation for them. For the SNAP program, supplemental nutritional assistance program. We test case files for uh, eligibility, and in two of those sixty, we weren't presented with the documentation to support income. Similar to that, with the medical assistance, there were one of sixty case files that didn't have the income documentation. It was entered into the system, but keeping that supporting documentation is one of the main things we always test for. Um, RMST stands for random moment study testing. We tested two quarterly reports, and there was one or two people that should have been on on the list of getting tracked, but weren't. Now, the impact of that really has no financial impact. It's just the state will call periodically and say, hey, what you working on? So at any random moment in time, they sort of track that and and based on that, they they got a pot of money. And then based on those results, they'll figure out Bell Trammy's pot of money, how much goes to each of the programs. So in total, that that amount doesn't change. It would just maybe result in a little bit more going to the foster care program and less to NA or something. So not really a big deal. We're just required to communicate that. And then um, a good policy, whether you're paying bills or, well, that's a good example. You know, someone prepares it and then reviews it, you know, to make sure it's all um, good. Um, in a couple different programs, a good control over the eligibility is that, you know, periodically do what we call case file reviews, where the supervisor will review the the steps taken by the caseworkers to make sure all the Ts are crossed, Is are dotted. And um, you know, there was some turnover, and and I think in the past, the county has been uh, done more of these, but that we just recommend the county um, get them documented. There may be some additional ones that were done, but they weren't documented. So there's kind of a theme, document, document, document. That's kind of an overall recommendation. Just make sure you're documenting what you're doing and and provide it to the auditors. We also test your compliance with various state statutes, and there's one about publishing claims in the newspaper, and you all have known about that one for a couple of years, but there's some uh, cross-benefit analysis that I think has been done on that. We're just required to communicate it. Financially, how'd the county do in twenty-two? Actually, quite well. Your overall, your governmental funds, um, the fund balance was up about eight or nine million. Not coincidentally, there was about eight point eight million of ARPA money that you had received and now of claims. So you you got got those revenues and they're in your coffers now. So um, that uh, helped with the the chart on page thirteen, which we've included over the years. A key metric is how many months of expenditures do you have in fund balance or reserves? And you went from five point three three to six point two one, so an increase of about a month. I've mentioned in the past that there's national organizations and the state auditor's office recommend no less than five months. And um, this is a a lot easier or funner discussion when you're sitting at six point two one than five years ago when you were at two point seven four. I remember those days. It was like, you know, I was probably standing here saying, okay, this is serious. You, a- and it was trending downward. So um, it would be interesting if we would show ten years on that chart. But it would be like a valley, you know, so um, I I would give you a thumbs up on on four years, may not seem like a lo- a long time, but or may seem, how do I put this? It's not really a long time, and to be able to go from two point seven four up to six point two one is is pretty significant. Now, keep in mind, some of that's that one-time money that you got in ARPA now. So all in all, two months or uh, you've been above that no less than five months for the last two years. So good job. Page fourteen, we just look at the total governmental funds, revenues, expenses for the year. They were up about ten million. Um, there was an increase in some highway user tax in the road and bridge fund and the ARPA revenues. Along with that, expenditures were up about nine point nine million. I I think there is like eight or nine million additional revenue or funding from the state and federal government road and bridge. So revenues went way up. Well, that's where the biggest uh, increase in expenditures was as well. So um, the revenues were up. Your middle funds, I can't remember what that six point one is. Page fifteen looks at where the expenditures occurred, and if you look down in the chart, the, no, these are still revenues. The intergovernmental revenues are up eight point four million. And uh, taxes up about three hundred thousand. So only one percent increase in total taxes there. There there's, it's not just property taxes. There's some mortgage registry indeed tax in there. Y'all got a little bit of sales tax coming in too. That was up a little bit in uh, twenty-two, if I remember right. So all in all, yeah, about nine there you go, I think, about nine million, almost ten million, nine point nine increase there in revenues. Page sixteen is the expenditures, and here the the highways and streets, which is basically the road and bridge fund, was up nine point three million in expenditures. And um, I don't, I think it's been a few years, but that I mentioned this, but the road and bridge fund, what we see in all the counties that we uh, audit, it is a bit of a roller coaster on their revenue and expenditure, so dependent upon whether you you're that awarded federal grant dollars for some projects and also the highway user tax distributed from the state. Um, really makes things fluctuate. So um, in the general fund specifically on page seventeen, the fund balance was up about eight point two million. And and that's where the revenues for ARPA were recognized. So the general fund, because now all of a sudden your fund balance numbers are up, the general fund itself says you got ten point seven five months of reserves. That's not that's what, you can make numbers, say anything you want, right? But the reason that bumped up as much as it did is purely because of those ARPA dollars in there, and and you're going to be spending. So that um, it's kind of a one-time uh, inflow there. Page eighteen, road and bridge. Now, this only has about one month of uh, or no, sorry, six point two months of reserves. That also is above the recommended minimum of five months. And it was up about one month for the year. So uh, that all happened even though the total fund balance went down. So uh, financially, road and bridge fund is solid. The Health and Human Services Fund, its fund balance decreased about seventy-one thousand during the year. And if I remember right, there was a transfer out of this fund into the general fund, which um, I think it's, I think is about eight hundred thousand, if I remember right. Yeah, about eight hundred and twenty-five thousand. But um, this is the fourth year in a row, though, in this one where the revenues have exceeded expenses or expenditures. And the four previous years before that, that was not the case, and that gap was huge. So uh, again, uh, positive signs with the Health and Human Services Fund. But um, it does only have about one month of reserves in that fund. That's different, you know, much lower than road and bridge and general fund, but they do get grant reimbursements on an ongoing basis, more so. That's a a big chunk of their revenue. So they they are getting money in in January, February, and March and April. Whereas the general fund primarily, it it's it's a taxes. So um, another major fund the county has is a forfeited tax fund, and that's definitely dependent upon, you know, how many uh, forfeited tax sales there are for the year. Its fund balance was up about two hundred and sixty-six thousand. Revenues were up about two hundred and fifty thousand. Expenditures actually decreased about two hundred thousand. So pretty good year for forfeited tax. Solid waste fund, fund balance was up about seven hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, ended the year at about one point four million in fund balance. It's got three and a quarter months of reserves in that fund. And so overall, page twenty-three, definitely say the county has stabilized financially compared to four or five years ago. The general fund fund balance levels are solid. So is road and bridge, human services. Still a little low, but paid back the general fund uh, about eight hundred twenty-five thousand. So waste funds improving, overall fund balances up. So a very solid uh, good year. Um, there was one unique item this year that uh, the staff, yeah. We implemented, it was this governmental accounting standards board statement number eighty-seven on leases. Uh, there's a lot of work from staff to go through and identify all them and uh, get them reported in your financial statements. And then when it rains, it pours. There's a new standard for next year's audit, and it's number ninety-six. And it's for subscription-based information technology agreements. And it's a very similar process. It's a staff went through to identify all your leases. Well, this new accounting standard said, well, maybe we should have you, the governments, report assets for all these subscription-based IT agreements. So same process, but a different focus or topic for next year. There's one county we audit that they think they have about two hundred of these subscription-based uh, agreements. So more to come on that. Um, but all in all, yeah, just thanks again for allowing us to to serve you. And I got time for questions, and I apologize for being a little late stuff too, but I didn't want to drive over the speed limit, you know, in Bell Trammy County. That'd be kind of bad.
Uh, Mr. Chair. Well, Doug, uh, thanks for for being here today. Um, you mentioned that uh, you and the firm have been doing uh, business with the county for for twenty years. That's uh, quite impressive, and I I feel like I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't ask if we get a discount.
Well, you do, actually, I, we do, we have uh, definitely provided the county a discount from our standard fees each year.
And I also want to remind, uh, you know, my colleagues up here that uh, Doug is always gracious over at the AMC annual event. And uh, um, I make sure I I grab a a handful of goodies, so I know we're getting some of our money back.
Like a pen. We got the best pens around, for sure.
Um, but maybe, I don't know if it's a question for Doug or Tom, but I'm kind of curious to know how much um, Health and Human Services uh, still owes the general fund.
Should we have Ann give the good news? It's paid off.
Oh, good, yeah, nice, awesome, yeah, good job. Yeah, that's good, good to hear. And also, what what is our um minimum uh fund balance? Don't we have a policy that says we need five months, six months? Okay, and we're meeting that six months, right?
But I would just again caution, because there's that one real big influx, that once that. Once you start spending that, that metric, that ratio is is going to drop fast, so just be careful.
Thank you, Mister Chair.
Thank you, Mister Chair, has anyone done any calculation as to what we need to do once the ARPA money is gone in order to maintain that? Five to six month range, is that?
I think Tom has uh calculated that, your work.
Yes, uh Mister Chair, to uh answer Commissioner Carlson's question, uh we have been monitoring that. We do not expect to drop below the four and a half month reserve, uh we've actually, keep in mind that Doug's information here is a couple of years old. So he's auditing backwards, uh our current financial position is um such that we have kind of almost already either encumbered. Or soon to encumber all of the ARPA dollars themselves, so we have seen a shift from our reserve going back down. But we do not anticipate it to drop below four and a half months at any time.
Great point, because there is a a deadline on when that's got to be spent and it's in twenty five. I think.
Actually, Doug, thank you uh.
Or encumbered, it doesn't have to be spent, but it's got to be encumbered and planned for and then spent by twenty five, I think, right?
Well, uh the Department of Treasury's rules have changed on that, so there was a one time allowance of up to around ten million dollars that you could actually encumber. And the county did do that, so all of our funds are already encumbered and uh and spent according to the eyes of the the treasury. And so they have been uh essentially incorporated into general fund um balances uh as it is.
Yeah, using the approach that you did, that's why we were able to audit that this year. And otherwise, i- if you spent two million one year, two million in the next, two million in the next, two million in the. We'd be going through that program every year, so it actually is a really good idea with with how you uh. Approached it um for twenty two.
All right, well, thank you, Doug.
Thank you.
Drive careful.
Will do, have a great fall.
You bet. National crude oil spill site update.
Little blueberry country, yeah.
All right, good afternoon, commissioners, thank you for allowing me to be here today. Um I gave a presentation last year, maybe around the same time. Um and I'm here to just share about the the National Crude Oil Spill Fate to Natural Attenuation Research Site near Bemidji. That's why I'm here, so um and this is just kind of an annual update, I understand there's a couple of new commissioners. And so this is probably very similar to the presentation I gave last year, but a good refresher on what we're doing out there and and why the site's important. Um and why all kinds of people come to Bemidji every summer to study crude oil. Um and my name is Jared Trost, I'm a hydrologist with the US Geological Survey, um our office is in Mounds View. And I'm representing a large team of people that come to the site every year from from all over the country, uh really. So the story begins on August twentieth nineteen seventy nine, when there was a large uh pipeline rupture. Out near Solway or north of Solway near Pinewood, and there was about ten thousand seven hundred barrels of crude oil. That was spilled from the pipeline, from the Enbridge Pipeline, so it was line number three that uh the spill happened on. And here's a picture of what it looked like shortly after the spill, um you could see a tanker truck there for scale. Um this is an area where oil was sprayed over land surface and then oil drained off the picture here and eventually accumulated uh in the ground. Or uh in a in a wetland that was just to the south of this site, cause of the spill was a bad well. And um it's sandy, sandy sediments out there in the water table out there is anywhere from one to thirty six uh feet below land surface. And so the oil went through the sand quickly and got in contact with uh with groundwater. And so you can imagine, I guess you've seen plenty of pipeline spill headlines recently or oil spill headlines, you know what those headlines were like. It was a little harder to find headlines for this one, though, I have to admit, even with Google. Um but here's a few, a few headlines from the local paper, uh Lakehead Pipeline bursts near Pinewood. Um and it did make the, the Associated Press picked it up and the New York Times ran an article on it um at the time. But it didn't make nearly the press, at least from what I can find looking through old headlines and such that current uh spills make. But a few decades later, it has still shown up in the headlines, uh but the story has really changed from disaster to discovery. And that kind of highlights what we're doing at the site now, and so here's a few headlines that have been in the news the last ten, fifteen years. Um and just as we learn new things or a new paper comes out, a scientist published something, um it renews interest in in what we're learning out here. And so really, our our main goal of why we come back every year and and collect samples and continue to study the site out there. Is, you know, understanding what happens when spilled petroleum is left in the ground. Um you know, more likely, any of you would come in contact with spilled petroleum at a like a a gas station. With a leaky underground storage tank, right, everybody, I guess, raise your hand if you filled up your car at a gas station. I have, and there's there's tanks underground that are storing that, or there's, you know, fuel transfers happening and there's large tanks where stuff is stored. So that's much more likely, those are much more common than these big pipeline bursts, but it's still petroleum and the site still has relevance to those kinds of questions. And so our primary goal then is just understanding what happens when you have petroleum in contact with groundwater. So the site itself, as I mentioned, it's out uh near Pinewood, um it's really an underground observatory comprising lots of wells. Uh for observing what happens to the oil as it says it sits there to the water that's in contact with the oil. And then the uh the the vapor, the gas in the soil above the spill. And all the little dots that you see on the map, those are observation points where we um can collect samples or have collected samples uh to understand what's happening. And you can see a couple other things, the uh that little explosion graphic, that's where the spill actually happened. And you see three uh black outlined areas, that's where oil is is presently in contact with groundwater um at the site. See the spray zone, you remember that that first picture on the title slide where the oil sprayed over land surface, this is the approximate extent of that. Um and then we spend a lot of time studying the groundwater and the groundwater is flowing generally from these oil bodies towards this lake. On the image here, and one thing that's routinely monitored at spill sites um is benzene, it's a known carcinogen. It's a bad chemical and uh they'll look at trends in benzene, for example, to evaluate a risk based decision on how to manage a site. And at this particular site, uh the benzene has been stable um there for uh many, many years. Um we have seen other plumes of unregulated compounds, but this is the value of the site, is that we're able to look at these things. Um that aren't routinely sampled for at spill sites, so your neighborhood gas station, if there's a spill, they wouldn't monitor for elevated dissolved organic carbon per se. But there's information there and we're understanding like what's in that, is it bad, does it matter that that this is out there? Um and so having industry and the regulators all as part of the research site help us address those kinds of questions. So you might be wondering, how does an oil spill in the middle of the woods become a famous research site? Uh well, as I mentioned, it's a great place to study and it's a lot easier place to study compared to other places where petroleum spills happen. So if you think about, this is what the site looks like, um pretty easy to get in, get access, there's a a, you know, a real old railroad grade. The ATV trail, easy access to the site, but if you think if you have a spill here or if you have a spill at a big refinery. The ability to get in and collect samples is is much more challenging, and so it's a tremendous research site that allows people uh the ability to collect samples. And so forth, um to ask relevant questions that are informing how we treat spills in areas like these others. Uh and I, like I said, I'm representing a whole team of people that are doing work at the site. Um I work with the USGS and the USGS is really uh kind of the glue that's holding this research team together. So people from um like Rutgers University or Western Michigan University or uh Arizona State has been out there. Um it there's been a lot of different folks that have come out from different universities and they will uh come out. And and we're kind of the glue that helps coordinate all the research, we have a condensed field session, so every summer we have about two weeks where people come out to the site. And uh and do their research and everybody's there at the same time. And so uh this is where uh we have a a great foundational working arrangement, working agreement. And um and so you, as the the board, are are part of this story as well, um and so that's really why I'm here sharing about this. Because it's in Beltrami County and uh and you are part of the agreement that helps make this happen. Um and so the name, the National Crude Oil Spill Fate to Natural Attenuation Research Site, um that is the formal name given. In this uh MOU that was established in two thousand nine, um and it's a cooperative venture among the regulator, which is the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency. The landowner, Beltrami County, uh the responsible party, Enbridge Energy and the science agency, and that's who I'm representing, the USGS. And the purpose was to establish and maintain a site at which research can be conducted concerning the fate of crude oil in the environment. And overall goals of the site, um to support the advancement of science on the fate transport and natural attenuation of crude oil. And to provide researching, learning opportunities to a whole host of people that um are related, are involved with the petroleum industry. And research. And so just a brief history of how Beltrami County has been officially involved. Um two thousand nine, we had the first formal four party collaborative agreement signed. And then every five years, this agreement comes up for renewal, so we signed it again in two thousand fourteen, twenty nineteen. And now in two thousand twenty four, um we will, we're just beginning conversations about getting another renewal um signed. So that the site could continue and we don't anticipate any major changes to the agreement, it's been working out very well. Uh we coordinate a lot with uh Dick Moore, the Natural Resources Department here, um he's been a great advocate and and representative on our steering committee. And then we have very active participation from Enbridge and from the Pollution Control Agency as well. Research funding usually comes up, well, how do you fund everything that's going on out there? Um so the USGS provides the bulk of the funding, like my salary and and a lot of the coordination tasks that comes from the USGS. But then other entities that come in from from outside like Rutgers University, they get funding from their institutions or from other grant opportunities. From, for example, the National Science Foundation, there has been at least one legislative citizen commission, the LCCMR. Um there has been at least one project funded through LCCMR that's happened out at the site, um that funding went through uh St. Thomas University. And so then just a real quick update, so that's kind of an introduction to the site, um and then a quick update on some recent activities. Um here's just a, some pictures of the folks that all came to Bemidji, we were here in uh the last half of June this year. And so we had two weeks of field work and we had really two completely different crews come out um over those two weeks, we do a lot of drilling. Um GeoProbe, for example, is testing some new uh technology and so uh they came out to to test that. And then we do a lot of water quality sampling, just understanding how the water is changing, and so the the second, the week two group was really involved with water quality sampling. And then just to highlight um the connection to Bemidji State, uh they've been getting more and more involved uh each year and it's great to see their participation. It's getting harder and harder to travel and more expensive to travel, and so they're collaborators on a lot of projects. And so if we need a sample collected outside of our two week field session, we can talk to folks at BSU and they're able to come out. And I know Miriam uh Rio Sanchez and uh Carl Isaacson at the university, uh they're using it as a uh classroom. They actually have a field trip planned uh for tomorrow to go out and and visit the site and and learn some hydrogeological uh concepts. And so, and I was, I visited Miriam's class today and gave a guest lecture about the site. And as I mentioned, yeah, it's an outdoor classroom, they even go out in the winter. Um and so we had another new site this year, um we called it the Bemidji West Site, which happened to be on Oahu, Hawaii. Uh and so uh it, uh there was a a major fuel spill, uh the Red Hill uh fuel, a bulk fuel storage facility is used by the Navy. Um it was built during World War Two, there's twenty huge underground fuel storage tanks, each tank holds about twelve and a half million gallons of fuel. And they had a major spill in November of twenty one, and in that setting, it's really difficult to understand. Like uh is the fuel degrading, which direction is groundwater flowing, uh where where is the fuel degrading? It's uh four hundred feet of volcanic bedrock to get from the top of the mountain down to the water table. And so drilling is really expensive, and so some of the methods that we developed at the Bemidji Site, uh we were directly involved with sampling out at the Red Hill Fuel Site. And so the North Woods was connected to an island in the Pacific, and so I I had no problems going to Hawaii to sample. It was, it was okay, um but uh but anyway, what what had happened is their drinking water supply got contaminated. So they're trying to understand how long of an issue, how long is this going to be an issue, what do we have to do to try to clean this up? Um and so it's an ongoing thing, so if you Google the Red Hill, the Red Hill uh fuel facility, you'll come up with all kinds of headlines and information about that. And so uh just in summary, you know, this is a picture of when the spill happened, uh things were different, how we approached oil uh oil spills back then. We've certainly learned a lot along the way, um this is a, the top picture is is a training we had out at the site. Um uh I guess almost ten years ago now, we had a lot of people outside to learn methods and that kind of a thing. Um so it's come a long way, but it continues to be a really valuable resource for um the industry. And as long as we continue to use petroleum, the site is definitely going to continue to have that value um to understanding what to do when petroleum is spilled. And so I'd like to thank you for your time today and I'd be happy to take any questions that you might have.
Good questions, Chair, yes, thank you, Jared, I got a couple of questions, uh with, and that one image you had, you showed the spray zone going this way. But there were a lot more wells on the opposite side of that than there were in the right in the spray zone. Why, why would that be, why wouldn't you have had wells, I mean, there were a couple in that spray zone from what I recollect, but.
Yeah.
But not nearly as many as the opposite side of that.
Yeah, so the the um, so the oil sitting in in uh in contact with groundwater, so the groundwater flow direction, maybe I'll go back to that slide.
There you go.
This one, yeah, okay, so the the groundwater flow is generally from that sprit, so the spray zone, then you see the the areas outlined in black. Um this is where there's oil still remaining in the subsurface, and so all of these oil, are you talking about these wells over here?
Yeah, all the ones on that side, and I guess that just answers the question, because it's it's naturally flowing towards the lake, because that's downhill essentially. And so the groundwater is flowing that way, hence that's why you want to test that way.
Yep, and we do have a few up this way as well to see what the groundwater is like before it gets to the spill. And that's a a key comparison to me.
And then my other question was uh um at some point, I would assume that you probably will quit testing out there and what will you do with all the wells? I I actually grew up out in this area and.
Yeah.
Been on embossed every single trail out there. I've seen the pipes all over, I was just wondering if they'll just stay and be capped or or if they'll be filled and and or or what what will eventually happen with them?
Yeah, so the um Enbridge owns some of the wells out there, and so they'd be responsible for the wells that they own out there. Many of the wells are owned by the the USGS and we actually have a uh an agreement uh of a well access, site access agreement with the county. And that stipulates at the end that that we would be on the hook for, I guess, either transferring ownership of those wells to somebody else or or sealing them appropriately.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else, Jim?
Uh Mister Chair, so uh I was just wondering, I mean, this uh. It's been going on for forty years, right?
Yeah.
So I was just kind of wondering, how much longer do you anticipate?
There's, there's still things to learn, you know, the, it it's a good question, because a lot of. There's, there's still things to learn. You know, the, it it's a good question because a lot of. You know, like if a if a gas station has a spill, um there's actually a study done in in Wisconsin. Um I think it was published maybe around two thousand nine. It was kind of a retrospective study. Um where somebody actually got permission to go visit closed spill sites and see, you know, what was happening with benzene. What was happening with some of the indicators of biodegradation um after site closure? Um because the site closure is done kind of a risk-based process. And so they'll see, for example, that benzene concentrations are stable in in a down gradient well or declining. Um but let's say, you know, after the site closure, a new well goes in, new pumping well, down gradient, for example. So all of a sudden, you have a lot more flow going through the site. Like you, you can end up having a problem where benzene, the benzene plume starts expanding again because the conditions have changed. And so to your question about how long will we be out there? I mean, I guess as long as we're continuing to monitor and relieving petroleum in place, I think that there's value in understanding what happens in the long term. Um we've seen a lot of changes, like the questions that we've asked through time have certainly changed. Um regulations have changed through time. And so if if a new regulation is introduced, it is just a valuable place to test it and see. Um okay, does this, does this make sense to do? Um so there's, there's a need for information. As long as that need is there, I think the site still has value.
As long as the funding is there.
Yeah, right.
Joe?
Yeah, uh I was just, just a couple of comments quick. I was really happy to see this slides on there involving uh BSU and. Uh faculty and students there. What a great learning opportunity for uh uh outdoor classroom activity to take place. I'd encourage you to keep that going as much as you can. Uh that's, that's really good. Um and then uh I'm just wondering uh if you've studied or can talk a little bit about the effects on wildlife uh in the area. And why it's not a considered a superfund site uh as opposed to what it is?
Yeah, uh great questions. We we haven't done a lot. So most of this exists underground. Um and so the direct effect on wildlife, we haven't. We haven't like done it out there, but some of the toxicity testing that we've done um involves uh exposing like embryos of fish. Fish embryos to the water at the site. And you're seeing, okay, what are the toxic effects on this and looking at developmental changes um and that kind of a thing. Uh we've also exposed some other um toxicity type assays are exposing human liver cells to the water at the site. Um and then seeing uh what kind of gene regulation changes are to see if those cells are stressed by being in the water there. What that, like, does that direct translate directly to toxicity? Not necessarily, but it's giving us an indication of how animals. Um are interacting with the kinds of things that are in the water out there. Um and so there's, there's a a few publications on on that question. Uh but as far as like the wildlife at the site, we're not looking at that directly. Um and then uh you know, there, the, there is an effect of. How they, how they handled the soil at the site, um like the spray zone, for example. There's, there's hydrophobic soil out there that, you know, you can pour, take a bottle of water, you can pour it on the soil. Um and it won't infiltrate because the the sand has a coating of oil on it. Um and it, and it doesn't necessarily like, it's not like you take oil and dump on your driveway. It doesn't look like that. It's like very weathered oil. Um you can't see it necessarily, but you pour uh water on it and it won't go in. And so there's, there is an effect like that. And that's something that we may begin to study more in in future years. There has been somebody that has researched how to remediate that, that hydrophobic soil. Um or water repellent soil um by adding wood chips or by adding some clay um to that. And there is a paper that came out on that. Um but anyway, that could be an effect on wildlife that we just haven't looked at yet. Um and then there was another question, but I forgot what it was.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, how how does something get classified as as a superfund site or not? Like, this isn't.
Uh yeah.
And and just wondering what the difference is.
That is a good question. I'm gonna have to do some research on it and get back to you because that's a political or a, you know, a regulatory designation. And how like the path that this took compared to what a superfund site would take, I'm I'm not up to speed on that, how those designations were made. Thank you.
And there aren't any dishes in that lake. And the leeches didn't mind the oil because I was able to trap.
Okay, John.
Uh so just quickly, uh is, is there other sites like this across the United States or is this very unique?
This, this is very unique. There's uh, there is another site in California uh that isn't the same setting. But does have uh a fuel spill and there's been quite a bit of research done there. I don't recall if that one's still active or not. Um but this is certainly um the best or one of the best studied petroleum spill sites in the world.
Okay, well, thank you, Jared.
Yes, thanks for having me.
Appreciate you being here. Thanks. All right, Three Island Park and Mobile Maze recreational area proposal, proposed forest management.
All right, uh good afternoon. Uh this is my first time uh addressing the board, so I'll introduce myself. Uh my name is Nick Gronning. Uh I've been a forester for twenty years. For the last five years, I've worked here at Beltrami County Natural Resource Management. Um my family and I are avid users of the park system, uh year-round, the trails, the shelters. We love to use the cross-country ski trails uh in the winter and take the dog there for hikes all year round. And uh it's kind of an honor, a privilege, and also a fun part of the job to be involved in the the ongoing management out there. There we go. Uh I'm new at this too, so uh hopefully it's not too bumpy here. Uh this slide is from our two thousand eleven plan revision. It basically says that recreation is the number one priority in the parks. And aesthetics are a primary concern. Uh that includes trail maintenance, which takes a lot of volunteer effort and financial costs. Last summer, there was quite a few trees that came down across country, uh cross-country ski trails and had to be removed. All right, where am I going here? That way. Uh oh. There we go. Thank you. Um. So forestry is a resource where the decisions that we make today have a big impact on what that forest is going to look like in the future. Uh we try to achieve our goals uh by managing healthy stands that contain healthy trees. Oh, went backwards. Am I going this way? There we go. All right, starting off with Mobile Maze, I'll show you how I assessed the the stands for this proposal. Uh this is a map of the whole Mobile Maze Park. Uh the striped area in the center is the legacy uh area that does not get management. I knew that there was a a pine stand there, basically where you see the word Wildwood for Wildwood Road, that dark green area. Is a mature pine stand that is very thick, very dense. Um I knew it probably would need management. And I also looked at all the other stands. Uh to see if they were candidates for reconnaissance and then potentially management. What I found was uh it basically only made sense to look at these two stands at the moment. The big uh green pine stand is thirty-seven acres, so that means that we can't manage it all at one time. Um the uh the park management parameters are fifteen acre management units. And not managing adjacent units within five years of each other. So if you see the middle uh stand in that green section there, adjacent to that is is an active management unit. Right now, we're doing a a forest management uh timber sale as we speak. So that middle stand can't be thinned out for another five years. Um the gray area to the northwest is Aspen and Hardwood. Uh I noticed while looking at the pine that some of that Aspen is mature, starting to fall down and has some funguses and conchs growing on it. So I included that in the assessment. Um those green bullseyes are the inventory plots where I took measurements to to see what kind of condition the forest was in. Uh that's one plot per acre, which is a pretty intense sampling. Uh as I went through, I marked down whether I thought the stands needed or. The stand should have management at that location. So red means stop, no management needed. Green was, yes, this area would benefit from management. So my proposal is the, are the brown blocks there, trying to encompass as much of the the green dots as possible. Um and then not managing the areas that really don't need it. No, it's not really practical to cut out every single red part of the inventory area. But the nice thing about a thinning is that it can be set up to thin where it's needed and not then where it's not needed. So those are just kind of the the minutia of how to set it up. Let's see. So this is the uh the trail overlay for the management units. You can see there, within those brown blocks, those those black dotted lines are the mountain bike trails. Um it's going to be hard to do a timber sale in there without incurring some damage to the bike trails. Um I don't know if they'll, if it'll be uh restorable or if we'll have to start over at that point. But there is a plan to minimize damage and maintain as much continuity for those bike trails as possible. Um that, this map shows the extent of the bike trails. The the black dotted lines uh cover a good part of the park. And then you can see the management blocks are shaded in the lower right hand. So uh even if we do proceed with this management, uh mountain bikers will have the opportunity to ride before, during, and after the harvest. They just obviously would be excluded from the management areas when equipment is present.
Mr. Chair. Uh Tim. Uh I'm glad you brought up the bike trails because uh I believe it was June. June fifteenth, I I received a uh a message uh from somebody that utilizes the bike trails. And and uh sent me a short video of uh some of the brushers that were being uh overgrown. Um do you, do you guys do the brushing or or is there?
I believe that's primarily user maintained through the clubs.
Okay, okay. I'll let him know.
Okay, um okay, so this is a little bit of a closer uh view of how I intend to to tweak a potential management boundary. To preserve those trails as much as possible. Um like if you look at the middle block there. We're gonna try to keep the bike trail on the outside of the harvest unit. And that would also help facilitate a visual buffer on Wildwood. So just to talk uh briefly about what's in those uh blocks, like I said, block one up there is Aspen and hardwood kind of mixed together. Uh you got an Aspen overstory. It's got some uh large red pine in it. Uh a decent component of oak and maple mixed in with the overstory. So those other species are much longer lived than Aspen. So if we pull that Aspen overstory out, retain the hardwoods, the healthy ones. Um it should kind of push that into a longer-lived, more aesthetically pleasing hardwood stand. There's also quite a bit of hardwood regen underneath that when we take that overstory off, that'll get daylight and hopefully respond uh with good growth. Um that's five acres. The block two is ten acres. It's a nice, mature, mixed pine stand. It's got all kinds of species in it, but it's dominated by red pine. It's very thick, very tall, does not look like it's ever been thin. Um a point of concern is that eleven and a half percent of all the trees I counted were already dead. So that means that, you know, that stand is declining and is gonna either need some help or it's gonna, you know, it's fall down faster at some point. Uh block three is nine acres and it's the same conditions as block two because it's essentially the same timber stand. Um. So this graph shows basal area, which is a measure of density in the forest. And this is where it gets a little technical and uh. Probably not worth spending a lot of time on, but what you can see here is that the red bars are red pine and that's predominantly what's here. Um and if you, as you go along that bar graph, those are bigger trees, bigger diameter. Um just an in- indication of what's out there. Um this is a, called a stocking chart. And when I take this inventory, it gives us information that we then chart on the um on the stocking chart. And so what we have is an average stand diameter of sixteen inch trees, which are, you know, about like that. That's a very nice tree. Some are bigger, some are smaller, obviously. And um as long as the basal area or the trees per acre are within those. It, if they land on that chart, it's essentially a healthy stand. As you get toward the top of the stand, it's getting pretty thick and you want to thin it um toward what's called the beeline, the bottom line. So um. Forty-three percent of the inventory plots I took were nearing that top A-line, which means it's overstocked. It's ready for a thinning. Sixteen percent of the plots were actually off the charts, which means it's too thick and that's not going to be healthy in the long term. This is just a computer-generated visualization of uh of what that stand data might look like or does look like. Um and so just, you know, it shows a lot of big trees, little bit of an understory. Um and then I've got another graphic coming that uh will show the thin, you know, and and a visualization of a thin stand. Um so the goals for the pine stand are to retain the large diameter red and white pine essentially as long as possible. They're already a hundred years old. You know, we might be able to keep some of them another fifty or a hundred years if they're well managed. In that time, maybe you can bring up some understory. But um you know, if you leave them thick, they they definitely won't have enough so uh nutrients and water to to keep them all alive. So my proposed treatment for that big pine stand and also the, I mean, this kind of fits in with the Aspen and hardwoods that's on the northwest side. Uh thin the red pine because that's the most prevalent species and that's also what's crowding out other species around it. So we're gonna try to retain as much healthy white pine as we can. It's a valuable species. Um you know, it's a species that people like and it also spreads seed, which is a really nice attribute to have in an old stand to try to keep uh new trees coming up. So this is a a graph of what the stand attributes might look like or should look like after a thin. Um the trees per acre comes down, obviously because we're taking some trees out. The basal area goes from one fifty on average to one twenty. But those red bars are still, they, they're still indicative of having a lot of large red pines out there. So it'll be a good-looking stand. The green bars are the the white pines where it maintains as many of those as possible. Um so that's, again, that's a computer-generated uh look at what the the next stand might look like. And on to Three Island Park. Um the proposal for Three Island was a little simpler than Mobile Maze. Uh just because I knew that these two stands were close to the south parking lot. Um the part that is close to Island View Road there, that's thirty-five-year-old red pine that has not been thin. Um and then the northern part of that is large diameter, roughly a hundred-year-old mixed red pine, somewhat similar to the to the Mobile Maze stand. And so basically, it's just a a thinning proposal, those management blocks, uh same design as the Mobile Maze, one plot per acre. Take a lot of measurements. And now you'll see that the red bars on these charts are skewed towards smaller diameters. That's because it's mostly that thirty-five uh year-old stand, smaller trees and uh just need to be thin though. Um the larger diameter stand, same thing as the Mobile Maze stand, sixteen-inch diameter, um overstocked, failing health. Um the crew's results, uh everything about the younger stand indicates that it's due to be thin. Um that's just pretty much standard procedure for trying to carry those stands into longevity and and good health. Um the older stand primarily just needs to have the weak and high-risk trees removed so that we reduce the risk of a catastrophic. Uh event, whether that's insects, fire, blowdown. Um but even still, it's just these old trees are falling on trails. And if we harvest them, they're not there to fall on the trails. Um and then we make room for another stand to come in. So the goal's kind of the same thing, retain big pine trees as long as possible. Um and then reduce the frequency of trees falling down in our parks. Uh the goals for the first thing, promote the long-term health and vitality of that stand. And reduce competition for limited soil nutrients and water. Uh first then management's pretty straightforward, just trying to reduce competition and open it up for future access. Uh proposed treatment in the first that, in the first thin stand would just be a row thin. You remove one-third of the trees in there. And that's a, that's a good, healthy way to uh make more nutrients available, but keep enough of the stand together to be resilient against wind. And then I, you know, you you do like density because that forces the trees to to grow taller and and uh go after those nutrients. In the uh older stand, the idea would be to remove the trees that are high risk of failure. Um reduce that basal area to about one-ten, one-twenty. And uh remove the, there's quite a bit of jack pine and balsam fir that's already dead. So we want to get the rest of that out of there. And then uh the birch is pretty lively, but it's pretty mature sized. And that should regenerate on its own. Uh so that concludes the proposal. Um I'm wondering if the board has any interest in a field tour. Um, in previous management proposals, we've had public comment by mail or email, you know, for a couple of weeks as well. So I'm open to questions and comments.
Okay. Any questions right now, or do you want to select a date? Uh, if they choose to have a tour?
I'd love to have a tour.
And I know before we, when we've had a tour, we've just met out at the site at a certain time and then had the tour and the public was invited as well.
Mm-hmm. That makes good sense.
So you're, uh, proposing, um, when, do you have a date in mind?
Uh, if the week of September 18th to the 21st would work, that'd be fine. Um, you know, I'm basically pretty open for September.
And so there'll be a comments, uh, still coming after that then.
Yeah. That way, if somebody wants to come to the tour and then provide a written comment, they can do that.
Anyone, uh, any board member that has a, a date that jumps out, looks good for you?
Mondays are usually best for me.
Mondays are usually best for me as well.
I'm going to be, uh, gone on vacation that day. I'm out of state, so I couldn't do the 18th, but.
And do you want?
It's in my, in my district and stuff, so I'd probably like to be there.
Sure. How long? Couple hours? Yeah. I mean, as long as you want it to be basically, I would think an hour.
Tuesday morning.
Uh, you know what? I think for the public, Nick, what time did we have the last one? It was in the after. Yeah, it was kind of a comedy in some of that.
Wouldn't feel like Tuesday then because we got a board meeting that on Tuesday, then the 19th, um,
We have airport meeting on the 21st.
Meeting on Wednesday.
I leave for vacation on the 21st.
We, we can bump this up sooner too. I'm pretty flexible.
What about the la, the next week? Uh, the reason I say that is usually that last week of the month. I don't have as much anyway.
We could, you know, potentially do a doodle poll with a public announcement afterward too, as far as setting a date. I mean, I don't know if it, it may not be practical for everybody to, to line it up here in the next five minutes.
And last time, I think we had a, a pretty small group, but they were, they were interesting people that use the park, which is good. Uh, what about the 25th?
I'll be on vacation.
Uh, 27th.
Not going back until the 30th.
All right. Uh, but, but why don't you do a, a doodle?
Yeah.
Uh, and then, and then we'll, if we can get three of us, fine. If it's two or one, whatever.
October would still be okay though.
Should be. I guess the, the thing is I.
Preferably the first or second week.
Yeah, I mean, I guess the, the thing is if, if we proceed with this, if it's all approved, um, I'll need some field time to get it set up. And I guess I'd like to be done with field work by the end of October. So I can put it on the next talk.
Oh, yeah.
I, I think, uh, it'll be quite, we're not going to get everybody. So just, uh, whatever it says that we get the most. That's what it'll be.
Okay. That sounds good. Okay. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Nick.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. We're going to make some changes then now to the, uh, agenda for the regular agenda. We're going to have to put one of the items in.
So, uh, Mr. Chair, I recommend that we renumber items 14, 15, 16, and 17 to 15, 16, 17, and 18. And we add, uh, we used to always have a, an open item number for, um, so it, then we'll use 14 as our other category and have 14A be a discussion about the opioid settlement uh, recommendations.
Uh, Mr. Chair. You said 14A?
Just in case we get a 14B, Tim.
Okay. Well, I was just wondering because if we, if we're going in that order, we have a public hearing at 6:00 PM and I don't know who we would want our, our staff.
All A or something.
Yeah.
I didn't realize we had a public hearing.
Okay. And then also we've got, uh, a preliminary budget to discuss.
So renumber 13 to 14 and then have 13A as the opioid. Or we could have 12A and not renumber.
Well, the thing is, if we start at, at, uh, five o'clock, we've got an hour before the public hearing. We should be able to finish it within that time. I think the rest of our business. Correct?
So move 12 to the end? Is that what you're saying?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I might offer a.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good idea.
Recommendation if that's all right.
Uh, I'm glad that you are.
I think, I think you were getting close, uh, but maybe just to expedite, uh, if you did take item 13, the public hearing and change that to item 14.
Okay.
And then added a new item 13, which would be other items. Then you could have 13A be your opioid settlement recommendation. And 13B be the FY24 preliminary budget. And then I could probably get through your administrator's report here in the next two minutes. It's very short.
All right.
We still renumbering the 14, 15, 16, 17?
I don't. Hmm. No. We're okay. Oh, thank you. All right, uh, administrative report, and then we do need a break.
That's left. Mr. Chair, I don't have much for you, um, for the administrator's report, just, uh, letting you know, as you, I'm sure you're very familiar. We have been working, um, pretty intently on the FY24 budget. Uh, we'll make the presentation here shortly. Uh, but that and the jail purchase that we wrapped up recently have been two things that have been, uh, consuming a great deal of time over the last several weeks. Um, we are putting the finishing touches on the county newsletter. We expect for that to go out here in the next week or so. Um, so that should be exciting. It's a little bit late, but we are also putting a lot more information in there about the jail project and just trying to get people a little bit more in, information and education about that. Um, just a reminder really for the community that we are continuing to look for a jail steering committee member. One member on that committee, and then also one member for the design and operations subcommittee. Uh, the closing for those, uh, requests for letters of interest or resumes or so is, uh, September 15th. So we're fastly approaching that. We do have a couple of folks that have submitted, um, their, their interest. And so we're, we're pleased with that, but we would certainly love to see more. Uh, and then lastly, just a reminder for you that the House Capital Investment Committee will be here on Thursday, September the 14th from 11:30 to noon. That has been confirmed. So, um, we are planning for that as well. It'll be pretty quick. Uh, don't, they don't really want a, a large presentation, but they're open to, you know, kind of sitting for a few minutes and, uh, listening to some highlights and also having opportunity to answer questions. So what we were thinking is maybe about a 20 minute tour and then a, a 10 minute sort of come together and have a, a brief conversation about the highlights and also answer some questions. So.
Again, that's, uh, you shouldn't have more than two.
If you do, uh, which is allowed, then we just have to notice it to the public and then the public would also be invited as well.
I am not planning on attending that. Mr. Chair, I, I would like to, since I have missed the Senate, so.
Yeah, I would like to do that. Okay.
So Commissioner Anderson. You're not, okay. So we won't have a quorum. So, okay. Thank you. That's all I have for you.
I'm sorry.
We'll call the meeting to order. We'll have the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Hey, are there any citizens out there that would like to address the board? Uh, on any topic that is not part of the agenda? Okay. Not seen anyone jump up. We will continue on. But I have an emotion to approve of the agenda.
Mr. Chair, I move that we make a couple of changes to the agenda. Renumbering items 14 through 17. I'm bumping them up. So item 13 would be item 14, item 14 would be item 15. Item 15, 16, and item 16, 17, and item 17, 18. Inserting, um, item 13 for other category, we would have a 13A discussion of the opioid settlement, uh, suggestions. And then 13B, the budget presentation for 2024. That is my motion.
Hey, is there a second? Second. All in favor, our discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So moved. Approval of the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, I make, I move that we, uh, approve the consent agenda as written.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So moved. Okay, let's go on with the regular agenda. The mailbox, uh, supports update and grant application. And Bruce, you're on for the next couple.
Yes, I have a few items for you tonight. The first one I have for you is, uh, our mailbox supports. I talked to the county board hopefully a year ago, but our mailbox support situation. And, uh, at that time, uh, the board was in support of providing mailbox supports for anybody putting up a new one or replacing their mailbox supports uh, on a county road or a county state highway. And these are the swingaway type, type supports. So the pole that comes up and then if they get hit by, um, snow or, um, wind or what it might, they swing instead of a, something rigid that gets hit and mutilated by that snowplow truck or the snow. Um, and they also are a safety item. Uh, mailbox supports are supposed to be of a certain gauge pipe or a certain, uh, like a four by four wooden post at the most. Um, otherwise they are a hazard in the right of way. If there's something larger, if a vehicle were to go off the road to hit them, then they would be a hazard. And so we have been this summer now, we have been providing those mailbox supports at no cost for someone that is, uh, putting something in new. Um, and really we haven't had that many people come in. So it hasn't been a, a big budget breaker or anything like that. Breaker or anything like that. Um, I think over time, um, maybe the word will get out a little bit more when people come in, but right now it hasn't been a big issue. I know that was one concern when we did make that change. But potentially to help us on this situation, I guess I would like. To be able to apply for a grant and do a countywide mailbox support replacement. Um, right now we do, sorry, I'm gonna back up, we do replace all supports when we do a road construction project. Reconstruction or a mill and overlay, we go through and make sure everybody's got one of those swing away type supports. With this grant that I would like to apply for, it would be a highway safety improvement program grant. Uh, we would do it countywide, we'd hire, uh, we'd go for bids, get a contractor and just go across the county and replace all mailbox supports on county roads and county stated highways. Um, the grant would have the ten percent match and so. Just taking a rough guess, again, we haven't put any time into figuring out. Um, exactly how many we would be replacing, but there are forty five hundred addresses. On a county road or a county stated highway. Uh, whatever you take a guess at half of them already are updated, so we're only going to replace half. Hundred and fifty bucks each to install them. You know, that's a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant request is what we'd be after, so our ten percent would be like thirty five thousand dollars. So in the scheme of things, it's not a large cost to us, but it would help us get to the point where we would replace all of our mailbox parts and get them. Um, to a new, uh, better swing away style support.
Uh, okay, question.
Bruce, would this be uh, mandatory or they really like their mailbox, they get to keep it?
Uh, right now, when we do a construction project, it's mandatory, we go through and replace everything. And that is kind of part of the bottom there, I guess I would recommend that we then change our policy and say, yes. You, you're required to have a, a swing away style support on a county road.
Uh, and Bruce, I, I'd made a note of that after reading, reading through the, and I thought we'd already done that.
Uh, it is not a requirement to have a swing away style support.
Okay.
Mister Chair, yes.
Yep, um, Bruce, you make it sound like we aren't replacing them if they already are a swing away. However, my own guy, my own mailbox, I was like, what the heck, I already had a swing away and it got replaced just when we did a, a project on, on my road. Uh, why would we replace a swing away if it's not the same exact type, but if it's a swing away already, why would we replace it and waste our money on it?
Yeah, I guess I'm not sure about your situation, but for most of our projects, we're going through and. And if there's one there, we're not replacing it, they do have to adjust it. There's a lot of times the roads get narrower or changes, so they gotta, you know, pull it out and reinstall it. And at some point, it's just as cheap for them to put in a new one than it is to, to move it. The contractor, the contractor bids the same, if it's a new one or uh, remove and reinstall and so.
They didn't widen the road or anything on our road, it's county twenty three and, and so.
Yeah.
That wasn't a case of widening the road or anything, and it was already a swing away, but yet they replaced it anyways.
Yeah, and again, that potentially was the contractor, again, it's just as easy for them to put a brand new one in and. But it's.
Because some people are touchy about their mailboxes and, and uh, I, in fact, I was at a constituent's house today. And he had a similar situation where he had actually told the people. Two or three different times and they had, you know, pulled the flags because they were gonna put one in and he said, no, we didn't want a new one and, and they uh, ultimately ended up doing it and he. Hung it in the tree and said, come and get it and put his back, um, and so I just.
As a statement, I'm sure.
Kind of, yeah, at that point he was mad because he had already talked to the people that were doing it and said, no, we didn't want it.
So again, on the policy, we do have the policy where, you know, there can't be objects in the right of way. So if it does meet that certain gauge pipe and or the less than the four by four post, then that's not a, that, that's allowable by state statute. But I guess where we would go with our policy is, is um. Not saying we're gonna go out there and run them over, but if they get hit or damaged, if they're. On a swing away post, or the swing away post is damaged, then we replace it, if it's not, then it's their own, up to, up to the. Resident to replace it. That's the kind of policy change that I guess I would potentially be looking at is. To help again promote the swing away style supports, they're much easier for us to plow snow under. You know, a wooden post with the mailbox sitting on top of it doesn't give our blade any room to get underneath it. And so, you know, the, with that longer arm, you know, we can clean that snow off from underneath them a lot easier than, than those. Plastic or just a post out there, so there is a, the benefit for us on the maintenance side too to, to get them into those swing away.
Okay.
Let me just ask that we communicate ahead of time to the residents that are going to have these replaced. Um, and then so they're aware what's going on because they, they're thinking it's their property and that we're messing with their property. And especially if they already have a swing away, you know, then tell them the benefit of getting it replaced is that then if it's something does happen that we will take care of it. Thank you.
Okay. Go ahead. I guess, so is there consentence, it's okay to apply for that? Safety grant is, I, I don't need a vote, I guess I was.
No, right. I just, Mister Chair, uh, worry about fairness, uh, you know, with. People that live on township roads, that the county plows township roads, but they don't get in on this deal.
Yeah, and they're.
Does the uh, mailbox itself get replaced or just the post?
Usually it's just the post, we.
Okay, so you are, you're, you're saving the people's actual mailbox, but putting it on.
I guess, drawing the line at the county roads, you know, those are the ones that we're in charge of and those are the ones we can apply the safety grant or apply to, to get the safety grant for. The township would be their own jurisdiction, would have to apply for those types of grants. And then again, taking it a step further, we only plow roads on a, uh. Some township roads, there are some townships out there that take care of their own roads too, so. But that's where I would say we would be drawing the line is on the roads where we have jurisdiction.
Okay, any other questions?
Oh, Mister Chair, you know, I'm not too sure if I support uh, this uh. Grant application, um, at this point, I just. You know, you, you do bring up a good point about fairness, um. You know. I got a lot of folks that I, I represent to and I'm not too sure how much uh, this will have an impact on them, um. I just. You know, fifty thousand dollars, you know, potential required matches, it's kind of a, a lot, you know, um. I. I can't support this.
Okay, anyone else? I feel for the safety reason, we've been pretty safety conscious in Beltrami County. And to me, this would help us on that goal as well, so I would support that.
Oh, I support it.
Okay, so I think you have, would have the majority.
You'd bring it back up to us if you get the grant before moving forward, but the.
Uh, if we get the grant, then it would show up on the five year plan as in a project to add to the five year plan. Similar to the spreadsheet I shared.
So then there would be a vote.
With, with the final number, as far as how much the math would be, so we actually vote on whether we want to spend that much or not.
Yep, okay. That's a good, good point. All right, next item.
Next item I have is just.
Uh, Mister Chair.
Uh, Tim.
Um, so also in the um. In the agenda bill, uh, Bruce mentioned that he also recommends updating our policy. I don't know, uh, when you would bring that forward or how we would go about.
Yeah, I, I have not thought about that beyond what I wrote on the piece of paper there, so.
Yeah, I mean, before we do a, a vote on a policy, it always comes to the board first anyway.
Correct, yeah, I bring it through a work, work session.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
I need some, I need some time to put that together.
Yeah.
The next item I have is to uh, set a public hearing date or dates for um, reverting some right of way to townships. Um, we have a couple of old platted right of ways that are not being used as a road. Um, and we are going through with our project on our number twenty two Island New Drive. And along there, there are a couple of these right of ways that are, again, we're not using them, not part of the road. And the process for us to get rid of them is we actually revert them to the township. And then the township can do what they want with them, but in this case here, we would. Most likely see them to vacate the right of way, because then it would go to the adjoining landowners. Um, but again, the process for us is to hold a public hearing in the township. In which you would be some, looking at to getting rid of that old road or right of way. And so we would need to have a public hearing in Turtle Lake Township and Port Hope Township. Uh, the right of ways are, one is in each, and so. I don't really need to set the dates today, but because I guess my thought or question was is. Would the county board want to hold a regular board meeting or would it be a special meeting? Um, at these townships and it can be on the same day or different days or. But I guess I'm just looking for, there's no rush on these, they've been sitting there for a long time, so. But I guess my kind of question or request is that we hold uh, public meetings in those two townships sometime in the future.
John, Bruce, is it common to make sure you coordinate with the township board, uh, so that.
Oh, yeah.
Maybe you have it at their board meeting time or is that, I mean, how does that work? I'm new.
Of course, I know both of these are in my district and the, the Port Hope Town Board meetings are the first Wednesday of the month at seven o'clock, so. Certainly feasible, we could have the public hearing right before their board meeting and not interrupt anything, uh, they do not have wifi or anything there, so. Um, we wouldn't be able to broadcast if we were to have our, our meeting there.
And I think that's somewhat of a problem now.
I, I don't recall for sure on Turtle Lake Township, I think that's the same, but and that's a pretty small. Um, town hall that's, you know, quite old building, so I don't know how practical it would be to actually hold our board meetings in those, but if.
I think it would be, I personally think it would be better if we just uh, were a part of their agenda on their, the day that they would hold.
Or a special, special meeting at each.
Yeah.
Because it has to be at their site, correct?
Yeah.
In that township, yeah.
So. So I think coordinate with the township supervisors, decide a date that works for that.
Okay, and it just. Has only been, again, the majority of the board to hold it, so I don't see these as being. Hopefully they're not controversial because we're giving them to the township and.
Right.
You know, the township would, can then do what they want with it, but.
You don't have to do one each, what's that?
One meeting, yeah.
But.
All right.
Do you want me to communicate back to you, Bruce, I can, or do you want to reach out to the townships or what, how would you like to handle that?
Uh, if you want to help, sure.
Yeah, and I.
Otherwise.
Certainly.
We'd be calling the clerk and, you know, too, but.
Okay.
Probably have Diane and Tom involved to make sure there's not other conflicts.
Okay.
Conflicts. Okay.
Grand opportunity, grant opportunities?
Yeah, this one here is a whole bunch of them. And I, for grants, a lot of times I'm just applying for grants, I'm not coming in front of the board looking for permission for every single one. Uh, when there's projects in our five year plan or we've got things that are in plans that have been discussed. You know, I'm, I'm looking for dollars whenever I can and then I'm, I'm bringing those once we get those. But some of these here are newer, different, they're not projects that are in our five year plan and or projects. Um, I guess that, that have been discussed and, and turned down in the past. And so I have a bunch of them here that I'd like to go through and get the board's consensus on if uh, it's worthy of my time to submit an application for. Uh, the first one is actually one project, but there's a couple of opportunities out there. But the project is uh, the trail out to the high school and the Gene Dillon Elementary School. Uh, this project has been discussed multiple times and we've been slowly working on it over the years. Um, we have, the last work that we did was a, a grant to look at the, pretty much the feasibility of it. Um, kind of put some cost to it, it was kind of just a. It was a hundred percent funded grant, and so there wasn't a cost to the county, but they could look into the. The route and figure out again, costs and feasibility of doing the project, and that was the. Safe routes to school engineering study that was included with the packet, um, so in there. You can kind of see the, again, with the public input and the, the process that was used and then the big thing that I would point out is the chart and the costs. And there's a whole bunch of different segments and costs, and we're not gonna do all of them. Because there's multiple segments going into the schools and different options, but we just looked at options. And uh, or potential routes for that, again, the feasibility of doing that trail. Um, last year I came to the board and got permission to apply for a grant that had hundred percent funding. And there was lots of applications and we were not selected. Um, but that grant opportunity is coming up again. And so I would like the, I guess, or to weigh in on to make sure that that's still okay to put some time into applying for that grant. And then the second question to that is, there are. I'm gonna say more dollars are a better opportunity to apply for a grant that requires the ten percent match. Um, those dollars are limited to projects within our district versus the hundred percent grant one. Uh, with no match, that's a statewide competition, so you're up against projects across the state versus. The other one that would have the ten percent, that would be uh, within just our northwest district and so. We potentially could have a better chance of getting that grant. And to take it a step further, if we have that ninety percent one, we could all, always come back and apply for that last ten percent. From that. Um, grant that provides a hundred percent. Um, part of it is the hundred percent grant one is a state grant and the one that requires the match is a federal grant. So we can use the state dollars to, or ask for state dollars to match the federal grant. But I guess the, I guess I'm looking for support of the, is there board support for the project and for the. Hundred percent grant and, and or for the ninety percent grant applications and just uh. Help, I guess the, there is a bunch of people here in the crowd that came in support of this project. Um, they came here last time too and just to help source support of the, the trail out to this school, we do, I guess I do hear. Um, requests for this project, um, and so I'm.
Uh, John. So Bruce, did I understand you correctly, you would actually apply for both of those at the same time and see which, and if we couldn't get to hundred percent then, or, or do you have to only apply for one or the other?
No, there's, there's. Um, for sure, the two grants and more out there, so I would be applying for them all. I mean, the first one is the hundred percent, you know, and then, then the ninety percent, then again, there's a potential of a couple of different projects. Or grant opportunities out there or that, and so I'd be applying for them all.
And then let's just say, for example, we were awarded the, the one with ninety percent. Um, that our ten percent cost would be approximately, any idea what that might be?
Yeah, I have that in here. Yeah, roughly three hundred thousand.
And then is that money that could be used from? Um, the funds that we direct from tree sales? But you know, our record, because there's, there's like a recreational parks component, um, I, I'm just trying to think outside the box how we. Could pay our ten percent, I, I like the idea and I, I would, I wish you would apply for that.
I gotta correct myself, it's twenty percent match.
That's what I was.
Oh. It was just, the, the safety, the safety one.
Ten percent, where's this ten percent?
The sa- the safety one that I talked about earlier was the ninety ten, this one's an eighty twenty.
But it's still the three.
Twenty percent is the three hundred thousand.
Okay, okay, and then it would be.
Opportunities to, for that match would be our county stated highway funds, our road funds can be used for a trail when it's alongside the road.
Yeah.
So that's, I guess, my first suggestion, um, then it would be. Then I, from there, I would be looking at, you know, like the pill dollars that come to the highway department and or if you've got a, something else.
Well, my understanding is we'd always have an opportunity at, at some point to. Pull back if we wanted to, I guess I would like to see Bruce go forward with this.
And, and that's, that's the question I have, Bruce, is that. Once the grant comes through, if we don't get the other uh, twenty percent saved from the state, can we pull back at that point or not?
Can we pull back at that point or not? You always can. I would just. It's tough. It's, I guess my concern would be is, so like the, the. The grant, it's the transportation alternatives grant, the federal grant that comes to the district. Um, they have a two-step process. You, you first a letter of intent, so it's kind of a short form, and then. Um. Then you either kind of get green lighted or red lighted, and I've done that once. And came to the board and, but then at that point, I think the board was then committing. Um, to move ahead with the project and pass a resolution in support of it, and that's when it it stopped or was denied there. But I would say at some point, I mean, you should be committed to doing it, however, whatever some. There's, there's.
Things.
One sitting there with, you know, making sure you do it. If something comes up and you can't do it, can't afford it. You know, and you you back out, I mean, it's not looked on favorably from the committee, you know, they're on forward, but uh. You know, up until that, you're putting some money into the design and construction of it. I'm gonna say you, you can, but you shouldn't back out. Here, yes.
Yeah, Bruce, uh, I got a little bit of info from, from the HRDC folks, Tony and. And that the said, you know, the safe, safe house to school is what we applied with last time. That's the hundred percent. We don't have any match. And we're, you know, certainly I would think we would be agreeable to go for that again, um, but. If that didn't go through, um, there's also active transportation infrastructure. That's a zero percent match as well, right? That could be used for this?
Yes.
So, you know, we've got kind of two options there for doing this without a match, so. You know, could we just go that route and and use the the transportation alternatives program, which I'm wondering if if that would. Be available for the the reconstruction on County twenty, for the bike path that's being proposed on County twenty. Um, up by the, by the golf course and that, if we could use money from that to help offset costs for that project?
Uh. Potentially. The, the, all these grants are gonna, applications are gonna come up here, like, within a few weeks. And I heard you say that you're going to apply all, for all of them, correct? I. Again, I, the applying for them, um, getting them. Um. Are all, I guess, if there's support to apply for those eighty percent ones, I guess I I will. Um, the, again, the odds of us getting a hundred percent ones, I'm gonna assume are low. Again, just based on last year and how many people applied for it, and then again, the number of people in our district applying for. Those dollars is, is a lot lower.
Joe? Well, I was just gonna say, I don't, I don't think we can be successful unless we try, so um. I I say we try, um, any and all grants that are out there, um. You know, I just see so many benefits to this uh, for um, the general public, uh, health and safety and. Uh, students, of course, but people of all ages really, so um, I'm totally supportive of this project.
As Chair, I I just would like to see if we've got two options, active transportation infrastructure and a safe house to school infrastructure. You know, if we go for both of those for this project, we would have zero match.
Right.
And if we apply for a project that we're, we know we're gonna already be spending money on, like the County twenty project. If that would be something we could apply for, the transportation alternatives money. Um, where there is a match, but we know we're gonna be spending it anyways, that to me would make more sense and be the best use of our grant dollars. If we're already gonna be doing a project and we can get some extra funding to help with that project. Um, and then you, you know, hopefully get a hundred percent match on this project, but that, that's what I would like to see, but. I'm open to.
Whatever the board wishes.
Hey, Jim?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I I think I'd be more in support of the, the um. One hundred percent funded uh, projects, you know, the twenty percent match, which equates to three hundred thousand is a. You know, a little over a quarter of a million dollars is is a lot, you know, to, to ask our, you know, taxpayers to. To help support, um. I'm not too sure if I've seen, you know, in this study how much of an impact this would have. Or how much of a benefit this would have on, on the um, residents in the area, you know, um. You know, if if the county board is willing to spend three hundred thousand dollars on this project, you know, I I'm sure there's a. A few projects in my district that, uh, you know, we could spend three hundred thousand dollars on as well, so I mean, I I think it's all about fairness and. And uh, you know, I would be, like I said, I'd be in support of the one hundred percent, but I'm not too sure about the twenty percent. And and where would the, where would the three hundred thousand come from?
Wherever it was.
So the taxes, do we have, do we have?
Well, it would be, again, since it's along a county state highway, it is eligible for county state highway construction funds. Okay, what do you need from us then? Looks, it looks like the, it's tipping and 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 scale applying for two that are a hundred percent match.
That's fine with me too. Any and all possibilities.
Anything we can get. Um, not the eighty percent. That's what I'm hearing. Okay.
You have a different project, like the Tony twenty-one, or is that too soon for the Tony twenty-one that applied here for the eighty percent?
Sorry, which?
On North End of the Lake, they proposed bike trailer in his area. So, you know, if we can get eighty percent of that, of the bike trail portion of that paid for with the transportation alternatives program. Grant, could you apply for that grant for that?
There are, that and other um, grant possibilities. For that project, but right now, I guess I am hesitant to apply for those grants. Until that project is fully fleshed out and I guess the board is. Behind exactly what we're doing there. Just with the hearing from the public and potential, I guess we haven't had that discussion yet on what we're gonna do there, but uh. I'm picturing a discussion and maybe, again, public informational or input meeting or something like that. But uh, yeah, there are grants like this for the trail. Um, there's the local road improvement program that helped actually build the segment to the east.
Yeah.
On that trail segment, you know, that is, that is out there right now too, and so there are. There are opportunities out there that I would be applying for, but. At this point. I'd like to flush that project out during, before I apply for those.
Kind of thing outside the box on, you know, other projects that we're gonna be spending money on if we can, you know, try to get grant monies to help offset money, that we know we're gonna spend the money on.
Opportunity three. Yeah, sorry, I gotta push through these a little harder. This is a project that we've talked about, um, but it's changing what the board has tentatively approved in a MOU. Um, we have a road swap that was being proposed with the city of Ten Strike. Um, we would take over their main avenue and we would give them a couple of blocks of a gravel road, however, there is a grant app. O- opportunity out there for small cities where they could apply for that grant. Improve the road before we take it over. And so it would change the proposed MOU that we have, um, kind of tentatively agreed to with the city of Ten Strike. Um, I would be proposing that we would, uh, we can uh, apply on their behalf. Once I get their approval, apply on their behalf, do the application, design, construction, everything. Um, so there's no cost to them, there's no match required for that grant opportunity. But again, it is a change from what the board has talked about or approved, so I just wanted to clarify or make sure that that is uh. Okay to proceed with.
Basically, it's just delaying what we would eventually do, but.
Well, and it's instead of us, um, reconstructing the road, using county dollars.
Right.
We would be able to get the, hopefully get the road improved with the state grant opportunity.
That, that's a no brainer.
Yeah. Yep, yep, that's. I was hoping for. Uh, then this last one is a, uh. Is a grant opportunity that came and passed. We had submitted one project, got it. Well, we were the only one that applied for it, so I'm hoping that it's gonna get funded, but they extended the opportunity to take more applications. Uh, this is uh, for projects that again are just within our district, so we're just competing against our other locals. Um, so they're looking for more projects, and so then I got my brain thinking, all right, what can we, you know, maybe make meet? This grant opportunity and uh. Lakewood, uh, was recently discussed, it's not in our five-year plan, but uh, it is a. It is a project that has um, stormwater erosion issues. And that is the type of projects that have to be with, that this has to fall under, and so I'm with it. It's maybe a stretching, but uh, right now they're looking for projects, so. If I can stretch and write it up and make it sound real good, that we're addressing these climate issues, stormwater. Um, then maybe, maybe we'd get some money to do that project, and so then that would put that project. Into the five-year plan, but this also would have a twenty percent match.
So, so Bruce, would that be, how would the timing be with all, because right now it's being used as a major detour route? Would it be setups in such a way that it's, wouldn't have to be that major detour route anymore and then fix it, so it's like. Now we're not getting all that detour traffic on them.
Well, the grant would be for a, like a twenty-twenty. Fix, I believe.
So most of that detour stuff.
Maybe twenty-four and twenty-five, twenty-four and twenty-five.
So most of that detour traffic would be over with?
Yeah, that detour should be done hopefully within.
Okay, so, yeah, alright, yeah.
And and is it both sides of urban?
I know, I would just be applying for the east.
Yeah.
Cause that would, in the end, again, there's bad drainage, no ditches, um, it would. Not much right away, so we'd be doing uh, curb and gutter, storm sewer type of a project and uh. And again, that's where I'm hoping that it would might fit in here.
Be a nice upgrade for that, thank you.
Yeah.
Please, please apply for that.
For that meets with the old seventy-one is pretty horrendous, right? Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Pictures along with your application and say, this is what it looks like.
Can you replace people's mailboxes on that one?
Okay, that was, yeah, good. Alright, that's all I have, sorry. Okay. Thank you, I always appreciate when you're looking for money. Yeah, jail project, uh. Uh, realty services reimbursement.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, uh, commissioners. Have an item before you that uh, wanted to bring to your attention in regards to the jail project. And in particular, the services that we have been um, utilizing in helping us to find a location. Uh, for the jail, as you know, the county board authorized to uh, myself to hire a. Um, or utilize the services, I should say, of a real estate agent, so um. Century twenty-one Dickinson Realtors was um, asked to help the county in identifying and negotiating and. Uh, crafting uh, purchase and sale agreements and conducting negotiations on behalf of the counties. You know, we went through several sites. During this process, uh, it's customary for uh, the purchaser to pay about a three percent commission on the services. Uh, as you know, we went through several different locations, so the first location was. Uh, the We Bolt property that we got under a purchase and sale agreement for five hundred and forty thousand. Um, so a three percent commission would have netted about sixteen thousand, two hundred dollars to the Realtors. Uh, we canceled that agreement as we moved on, um, across of of, um. Through the process, and the Quello property was then put under a contract for three hundred and sixty thousand. And a three percent commission would have been ten thousand, eight hundred dollars for that particular property. And then, as you know, ultimately, at the end, we did get the property donated to us, and so therefore there's no commission on that. And because there's been no commission, essentially the Realtors have been doing essentially six months or so of work. And now find themselves without any compensation for that, so it felt prudent for me to bring this to your attention and ask how you'd like me to proceed. In regards to uh, potentially compensating the Realtors for uh, their time and their work on helping us to secure a location. Even though ultimately it didn't result in a commission for them to thereby be paid, so that's what's before you this evening. And I'll stand for questions and uh, let you converse, um, as you see.
Mr. Chair.
Jim?
Um. Oh. I guess uh, for the sake of discussion, I'll, I'll make a motion that we. Uh, compensate, um, the Realtors at the amount of twenty thousand or twenty-six thousand. Um, for the work that they have. Uh, done on behalf of the county for our. Um, and seeking, you know, land for the uh, jail project.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Is there a second? If for lack of a second, we'll continue. Is there any other uh, thoughts?
Mr. Chair, um, has. Thomas, has there been any? Sort of soft requests for an amount? Or a suggestion? From the Realtors themselves?
Yes, sir, the Realtors um, have pointed out what their commissions would have been, which is what I read to you. Uh, they are suggesting maybe the ten thousand dollars of earnest money that the county put up. For the purchases of those property, which has been refunded to us just recently, uh, might be um, acceptable to them.
So, Mr. Chair, that was the number I had in my head, it was ten thousand, and I'd like to make a motion that we compensate the Realtors for ten thousand dollars. For the work that they put in.
I'll second that. That's what I was thinking as well.
Yeah, any more discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Um. I would be opposed to the motion, um, part of me is, you know. They work in this industry where they're paid via commission. What happened wasn't their fault or our fault, uh, we, we were very blessed to have the land donated. Um. You know, so I, I don't think ten thousand dollars is warranted. Um, that being said, I do believe in paying people for their time, um, and so what I did is. Just looked at each one of these bullet points they put together. And multiplied each bullet point, except for a few that had a, a, a few more. They, they could have been their own bullet points, multiplied each bullet point by fifty. And came up with nine hundred and fifty dollars, there's two of them, happy to round it up to a thousand each, so. I think a two thousand dollar amount would be fair.
Hey, Jim?
Well, Mr. Chair, um. I always try to look for a compromise.
Yeah.
You know, twenty-six thousand, you know, is 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 definitely a lot, you know, if. They would have got to sixteen thousand, you know, if we didn't pull back from.
Yeah.
From, you know, our, our first uh, negotiated, you know, property. They would have got, you know, ten thousand, you know, if we didn't, uh, if we weren't uh, blessed with the, you know, the donation. You know, I I hear, you know, a ten thousand proposal, I hear a two thousand proposal. Um, and we do have a motion for, you know, ten thousand, and I'm not too sure. If I could support either, you know, maybe if there's, you know, uh. Yeah. A little bit more, you know, because I mean, we, we backed out twice, you know, and I don't. No, no, they, they wouldn't have, no, no, but. You know, they did the work, they, they did, you know, what they were asked, um. And, and I think it. You know. If we could split in the middle. You know, between the sixteen and ten, I think would be a little bit more. I think a little bit more appropriate, you know, uh. Yeah.
Okay, any other discussion? Personally, I, I, I believe uh, in my head that uh. I would go with the, the motion as it is now, simply because I think that's kind of hinted by them. And uh, if they're gonna be satisfied.
If they're gonna be satisfied, I'm satisfied. So. It's recognizing hard work.
I don't really, you know, hear so much what they hinted or whatever, to me, I think it's equitable to Joe's point that they should be paid for their work. Um, we were blessed with not having to pay the hundreds of thousands of dollars for the property. So we're, and, and we were able to get back earnest money thanks to local uh, county administrator wording in our. Contingencies and such, so that ten thousand dollars definitely very possibly could have ended up having to give. We can utilize the help offset and be equitable with the, the Realtors to get them some pay. Um, if they, if they had gotten with the, the more, more recent one, um, it would have been about the same as that commission at ten thousand, so that's why I feel like. Um, I, I actually, my real job is a straight commission salesperson, and I have lost deals where I put a lot of work in. And haven't got paid a dime for it, so I'm, I'm right there with you on that, Joe, however, this is a different, different deal and, and I think that it. Valid for us to give them some compensation and, and not, not giving them exactly what they necessarily would have gotten if the deal would have gone through.
Any more discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Okay, it passes three to two.
Mister Chair.
Yes.
I just wanna uh, thank Tom for, for bringing this forward.
Very good, Tom, the next subject.
Uh, yes, sir, Minister Chair, I did bring up uh. An opportunity for you to consider your November regular meeting schedule, as you might know, uh, we have regularly scheduled. Board meetings on the first and third Tuesdays of the month, uh, with few exceptions. Uh, the November seventh or first meeting of November, uh, board meeting uh, is in conflict with the uh, special election. That the county's planning for the local auction sales tax. Now, uh, the board is allowed to conduct its business and have a board meeting on a special election evening, but it must finish its work by six P M. Uh, additionally, uh, the room is going to be also a conflict because ballots will be counted in this room on that. Uh, afternoon and evening as well, so uh. Thinking ahead, I thought you may want to just know that and uh, potentially make an adjustment to the regularly scheduled board meeting for November. Uh, by possibly moving it from November seventh back a week uh, to November fourteenth, that would of course. Not um, add or detract or, or subtract rather from your meetings, you would have another one just a week after that, so. Uh, November fourteenth, and then the, the next regular one would be November twenty first, so it would be kind of close, but we have done that before in the past as well. Um, alternatively, you could pick any date if you wanted, or just cancel it as well, so those are options that are available to the board. Uh, additionally, or you could keep the meeting as is regularly scheduled, and we'll just make sure that we shorten up the agenda and are done by six o'clock and uh. We have to look probably for an alternative site, maybe the uh, conference room, uh, which could get depending upon the agenda. Uh, a little bit cozy for folks, uh, if we have a lot of visitors from the public. But uh, just want to put that on your docket, nothing needs to be decided right away, so if you want some time to think about this, you're certainly able to do that. But uh, we probably should uh, sooner than later, uh, make some sort of decision on this and then get it posted on the website.
Okay, uh, yes.
I, I, I would like to recommend that we do it on the fourteenth, I, there's no way we want it, Jody's gonna have her hands full with this room, we don't. We don't need to be doing that on that, but I, I guess the, I don't see a reason why we can't do the fourteenth. I mean, I don't.
The fourteen.
I think we could just figure that right now and be done with it.
I'm, I'm okay with the fourteenth, I just want to say though that past practice, we have had.
We have.
We have had the uh, meetings. And just we finished by six, so that's past years, that's what we've done, yeah.
Sure.
So. But I'm open as well.
Okay.
Anyone else? Comments?
Uh, just scheduled for the fourteenth.
Okay, we'll update, we'll update the schedule accordingly, thank you.
Great.
Opioid settlement.
Yes.
Mister Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we um. Approve the recommendations for the opioid settlements with the um, the change being that those will be the minimums for both the reset. Program and the um, the juvenile programs that we would say that the fifteen percent will be the minimum that we would allow. Um, for those programs and that we would do the ten percent for the administrative cost to help cover our costs.
I'll second that.
Great discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? So moved. Budget. Okay, preliminary budget.
Mister Chair, do, do we have enough time for the budget?
That's what I.
I don't know.
We do have a few minutes before the public appearance, so um.
Yeah.
Break till six.
Do you?
How much time do you need?
How much time do you need?
I could whiz through it, I mean, it's kind of all the same stuff, I could probably be done in eight minutes, I think it was.
Okay, let's do that, uh, it goes far as you can, and then um, because we do have.
Actually five minutes, six clocks wrong.
Is it really?
I'm sorry.
It's only like ten or twelve clocks, so we'll just go quick, um, that's the budget committee, these are the processes that we follow, they don't change, everything's pretty much the same. So if the public wants to see this, they can go back and look at it, but essentially the process is exactly the same as we've used in the past. A couple of things that are driving our budget this year in development of our preliminary budget, inflation is still a problem for us. Uh, although it has come down from last year, uh, we're still seeing items in our budget that are ten, fifteen, and in some cases a hundred percent more. Uh, than they have been, uh, so inflation is still a looming problem for us, and it's driving a big component of our budget, especially for fuels. Uh, for um, certain types of materials and those types of things as well, workforce is still a big driver of our budgets, um. You know, inflation related wage increases are, are also a big driver for our budget. In fact, probably the majority of the budget increases associated with labor costs. Um, as well, county reserves, just wanted to let you know, we're not spending county reserves really um, down in this budget, we're holding around. Five months or so of reserves, um, and that number changes, you heard a different number earlier today, that's because that's a look back for a couple of years, so it does go up and down. Um. Building growth and also property tax base haven't changed a whole lot since the last time that uh, we did the budget, so. Still small property tax base and still limited growth going on. The county jail, both for medical and food costs, out of county housing, especially out of county housing is really driving this budget a lot, we've got an extra six. Six hundred thousand dollars of contingency funds just for out of county housing costs, and of course, we have the new jail that's also looming. Hospital level, level of care expenses, we've talked to you about this in the past, they continue to drive the budget. And highway does have additional um, needs, including a new maintenance shop, uh, that's gonna be well over a million dollars. And roadway conditions that we're still trying to get a handle on. There is some good news in the budget, that is that the state uh, legislature this year uh, finally came through, we were hoping this would happen last year. But uh, finally came through and nearly four million dollars of additional new funding came our way, which is why our budget is growing by. Almost that amount, although it's not uh, necessarily parallel. Uh, we got new adjustments in county program aid, uh, payments in lieu of taxes, medical assistance aid, a housing program aid, um. Probation program aid, public safety aid and score. Uh, now, a good portion of this money is either already encumbered, or, or I shouldn't say. But already established for, or earmarked for certain activity, for example, a probation aid has to go to the probation activities. Uh, homeless prevention aid is a grant, you know, so that has to go directly to, you know, homeless prevention, so we couldn't use a lot of the funds that came to us. About one point five million or so actually is helping our budget out, the remainder is either pass through or already earmarked in designated program funding. So that being said, this is what the budget looks like for twenty twenty four, we do have about a four point two million dollar increase. In the budget from last year, largely, this is new state money that's coming through. Uh, and also some property tax uh, required increases that I'll get to here in just a moment. Um, but we're going from ninety nine point nine to about one hundred and four point two. Uh, this is what the proposed levy looks like, uh, we originally started out this year, looking at a levy that was gonna be close to uh, seventeen percent. Of course, we all knew that wasn't gonna be acceptable, so the department heads and myself and others, we kind of rolled up our sleeves. We got that number down pretty good, and then we went into the budget hearings, or budget committee, I should say, and, and we're able to get that number down even lower. Um, of the levy amount, about five percent or so was offset with this new state money, so of. Of the seventeen, so that helped us lower it, uh, the final proposed levy for twenty twenty four is about one point nine two million or six point six five percent. Um, and so that's what we're recommending for your consideration as a preliminary levy for twenty twenty four. Uh, these are the revenue sources for twenty twenty four, they haven't changed a whole lot, they're actually very similar to last year, a couple of percentage changes here and there. Dominant funding comes from intergovernmental funds, that's funding we get from the state, uh, predominantly, or maybe federal government. Um, and then taxes are the second largest, and the charges for services are the third largest uh, revenue makers for the county. Uh, anticipated expenses, again, just a few percentage points changes in each of the cost uh, components of the county. Nothing really wildly different here, uh, we still have human services, highway and streets, public safety and general government as the four dominating costs. Uh, centers for the county. Um. Staffing modifications, we're always really careful about adding staff, this, this year it looks like we're adding a lot of staff, and we are. But the majority of staff are being added are either cost neutral or positions that are being funded by other sources, not county taxes. Uh, and so those are the details, uh, essentially very quickly, a county attorney and a um. A county veteran services office or case aid staff member, both included in the levy. A three-year limited term position that's being financed from public safety aid, that was one of those additional one-time dollars that we got from the state. She held in human services positions, which are being fully funded by outside sources, and actually one of them nets us about twelve or thirteen thousand of additional revenue just by having the staff member. A new environmental services staff member for the soil and water conservation district, which is being paid for uh, through that source of funding. And then a small increase of about six hours for an N R M staff member to bring him up to full time. And that is being paid for um, out of non um, levy funds either, that's timber and, and natural resources related revenues. So, that's what that looks like, um, American Rescue Plan Act funding, and then we'll wrap it up here, we did receive nine point one seven of ARPA funding. We do consider this one-time funding, uh, we do have more requests um, than available funding, we continue to find that, but in the F Y. Twenty four budget, we have about one point nine two million, that's being um, in, uh, requested in the budget. And uh, this is how it breaks down, uh, we have essentially four areas uh, being requested, caseworks, second floor remodel for health and human services. The out of county housing, which is a, a not to be used until absolutely needed, um, amount of four hundred thousand. And then a vault, a series of vault toilets uh, for ninety seven thousand. Um, the labor expense of nine hundred and twenty thousand is something that the board last year already encumbered, carry forward. Remember, we did that modeling for the union negotiations, that number comes back down to about five hundred and eighty thousand next year, and then it goes off completely. So this is what the ARPA accounting looks like from the initial allotment of nine point one seven million. All the way down to what our current unrestricted remaining balance is going into the next fiscal year, if no changes are made to this budget. There's your five hundred and eighty thousand, uh, which the board has encumbered uh, for next year as the last installment of ARPA to help wean off of that. And then back onto a more sustainable funding source. So um, that's what the ARPA dollars look like. Um, just a couple of acknowledgements, and then I'll finish up, wanted to thank uh, there's a lot of people that put the budget together, and I wanted to thank them here. Um, certainly the management team, uh, Diane and the, and the um, finance team have done an outstanding job, and the budget committee has done also outstanding work here as. Well, uh, things that you can consider or think about going forward, we have a statutory deadline of September thirtieth in order to have this budget preliminarily submitted. Um, and in order to meet this deadline, we do have um, a meeting already scheduled for our next regular meeting to go. Through the budget, answer any questions, make any adjustments that are needed. Um, so in between now and then, we would appreciate uh, reaching out and asking any of your questions, you're getting additional information, it's really important to get that in advance. So that we can come prepared to that meeting, otherwise, we might not have the information you're looking for, and we might need to have another meeting before the September thirtieth deadline, so. Please, if you have any questions, comments, concerns, issues, reach out to a department head or myself, um, if we do need to, we can schedule additional work sessions. Um, tax statements are going to be mailed to property owners beginning mid-November. And then uh, our public hearing has already been set for December twelfth, that's a regularly scheduled meeting, it was one of the ones that we bumped back because of the A M C con. Uh, can, uh, conference conflict, uh, and then we have anticipated final budget adoption as well as the property tax levy adoption on December nineteenth. So that's what it looks like going forward, that's all I have for it, I'll stand for questions if you have any.
Questions? That was amazing. Okay. Uh, if there are no questions at this point, I'd like to recess tonight's meeting to go into a public hearing on judicial. Ditch eighteen.
Right.
Busy night.
Yeah, I knew this was coming, so I saved them all up. You guys get to put on your ditch authority hats now, uh, this, these are public drainage systems. Uh, the county board is the ditch authority, uh, the county administers these ditch systems, they are private ditch systems. So no county tax dollars that go into them, uh, all of the costs are paid for by assessments that the beneficiaries of those ditches. Or that drainage um, pays for. Um, but this is part of the administration process here. Um, we had recently uh. Abandoned a section, a large portion of this J D eighteen. Um, a very small section of it uh, was. Kept. Uh, cause it is adjacent or kind of almost part of another ditch system, so we didn't want to get rid of that little segment, but the majority of this ditch system was abandoned. And there is uh, yeah, a public hearing and a separate process for that, there is a different process now tonight. Which would be to have properties removed from the ditch system, so just because that ditch segment or that ditch was abandoned. Those properties are still in that system until they go through this process of uh, being removed. And so we actually reached out to the private landowners in that benefited area that uh, where we abandoned those ditches. Sent them a letter saying, hey. To get uh, out of the system, this is what you need to do. Um, in the end, they're not paying that much in ditch assessments, a lot of this benefit area is uh, public lands. And so there are a lot of other. Um, entities paying in, and then what we are collecting for that small little segment is a very small dollar amount. So for a lot of these people, when they saw it on their um, tax statement this year, it was a small amount, so. I'm just gonna assume or guess that it wasn't worth their time, what if they're paying ten dollars or whatever, but for this landowner here. Uh, they did follow through, so they submitted a petition to have their property removed from the ditch. And so uh, county board now has a, the ditch authority now has a public hearing to hear the. Anybody that might want to speak towards it. Um. I had gave you my recommendations as the engineer, I was included with the packet. Um, my recommendations are that, yes, this property can be removed, they no longer benefit from the ditch, they are many miles away from the remaining ditch system. Um, and so there, they, they meet all the criteria, and so they, I would say that they are. Um, eligible or should be removed from the ditch system.
So can we make motions during uh, the public hearing, or we wait until we get back into session, correct?
Yeah, sir, you have to uh, allow for public comment, uh, close the public hearing and then make your motion.
Yeah. Okay, I don't see anyone here uh, to express their point of view, so. I'm going to close the, the public hearing and reinstate a regular meeting.
Mister Chair, um, make the motion. Uh. What he said. I'll, I'll make the motion to approve the engineer's uh, recommendation.
Okay.
Uh, is it removing uh, this landowner of uh, the judicial ditch eighteen?
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Do any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Alright, anything with the legislative and lobbying issues along with the commissioner's report?
Okay.
Okay. We're moving on down.
Uh, Mister Chair, mostly association Minnesota County meetings recently, uh, budget committees. Uh, wrapped up, that was a lot of my time last couple of few weeks. Um, thanks to Tom and department heads and Jody and everybody, I think staff went above and beyond uh, with. Crunching numbers and, and putting recommendations forward, so um, appreciate uh, being on that committee this year and. Um. It was a good experience.
Baptism by fire.
Yeah, exactly, so it was good, um. I had a um, kind of an impromptu meeting uh, with Senator Carrie Dietzick uh, a couple of weeks ago, she was in town. And uh, she's the Senate Majority Leader down in. She was in town and uh she's the Senate Majority Leader down in Saint Paul and it was a good opportunity for. Um for me to relay kind of what's going on uh in Beltrami County and talk to her about uh housing concerns and childcare and. And of course, our uh jail project put a plug in for uh uh some bonding money for that and. And she actually had a couple of uh recommendations uh for um for bill authors if if we need them, so um I'll relay that. Um whoever wants it, but Tom and our lobbyist for sure, so.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you, sir. Jim?
All right, um. I think it's been three weeks since we last met. Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh time has gone by pretty fast. Uh I think prior to last meeting, I mentioned that uh A M C was having their retreat. Up here at the.
Yes.
In Bemidji. Uh I want to thank the my colleagues that uh attended along with uh Tom. Um and the ones that that uh missed it, you missed out on a a really good event. Great food, uh and A M C always uh treats the commissioner as well, so um. But other than that, um that's all I have for tonight, uh Mister Chair. Thank you.
Good. Anyone else?
Uh just want to say thanks to Joe and to Jody and Sam and Tom um for the work on the budget committee. It was um. I thought it was an enjoyable experience and uh. It was. A a definite eye opener and uh but a a special appreciation to the management team. For the work that they did to help keep their costs down as much as they did. So thanks to all the department heads.
Uh and you know what? I really appreciate the fact that it was the committee itself was scaled down. Rather than having uh actually putting some of our folks in the middle of of a coandry. You know, and I think it was uh I I'm really pleased from what I see and I've heard, so.
Yeah, I'm kind of curious, you know, how much difference that.
And I know last year there was some hesitation about changing it down to to five.
Mm-hmm.
Member committee and I'm just wondering, you know, maybe Tom, has has that worked? How has it worked?
I think it depends on who you ask. No, I I think by and large, um you know, we we had uh an individual or two that were a little concerned. About maybe losing an opportunity to to be in front of the the budget committee. Uh we worked hard to ensure them that they would have the same amount of time that they would normally have. Uh when they make their presentations and and they have offered um graciously to give it a try this year. And so we will do an after action review. Um probably, you know, January of next year or so, after we get through the whole budget process. And and get some additional feedback and uh but what I'm hearing and and what I'm seeing so far would suggest that I think even the management team members believe that it worked pretty well. Um and uh and I think that we can probably expect to continue the the process that we've made uh adjustments on this year.
And then. Yes, just a reminder that there's an event coming up that. Um our mayor is kind of um. No.
The city's on the Mississippi, yeah.
Right, um it's the, oh, I'm trying to find it on my calendar.
I think they started Mississippi.
Yeah. Mississippi River Cities Annual Meeting and it's going to be this year in Bemidji, so Bemidji's hosting that. Um you probably all had an invitation. Um I'm going to attend as much as I can. I can't go to everything, but. Um I thought, you know, at least we could do is go and help support uh our mayor and our city um is to the extent that we can.
I would appreciate that. That happened with the power and I'm going to be on a trip, so I won't be able to attend, but um we've talked about Mississippi had one report on.
Yeah.
You know, we talked about that.
Maybe you and I can talk on the way down Thursday.
There you go.
There you go.
Okay. Okay, anything else? Can we go to the order? Everyone know their the upcoming meeting schedules?
I get a chat about next.
Okay.
Actually showed up at the right time to chat about that. I was, I got there, I go, I don't know if Joe is gonna be here too.
I figured you did golf course and call in.
I have a motion to adjourn.
Tell us into adjourn.
Second, second, all in favor of say aye?
Aye.